Good evening and welcome to the March 25th Foxborough School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being broadcasted and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Chairperson Sarah Ladani is unable to join us tonight, so we are -- before I start, I'm going to just point out, I'm going to pull things slightly out of order on the agenda. The Metco Advocacy Day will be coming before the Teaching and Learning Highlight. I'm just for everyone's information. So first up on the agenda is open public comments, and I believe we do not have any open public comments tonight. So we'll be moving on to the approval of the minutes. Tonight, we have six minutes for approval. We have three regular minutes and three policy subcommittee minutes. So if we could start, I guess, with the February 20th Policy Subcommittee Meeting?
Thank you. Motion to approve the February 20th -- this is going to get really repetitive. Motion to approve the February 20th, 2025 minutes from the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee meeting.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Camfield made a motion. Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor? Okay, minutes approved, 4-0-0. Now, we have the March 6th Policy Subcommittee Meeting.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the March 6th Policy Subcommittee Meeting.
Second.
Mr. Camfield made a motion. Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor? 4-0-0, meeting's accepted. Now, we have the March 11th Policy Subcommittee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve the March 11th, the meeting, excuse me, the minutes from the March 11th meeting of the Policy Subcommittee.
Second.
Mr. Camfield made a motion. Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor? Approved, 4-0-0. Okay, now, we have the January 14th regular meeting minutes.
I move to accept the January 14th, 2025, regular school committee meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ruder made a motion. Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor?
Oh, yeah, that's me.
Okay, all against? And any abstaining? So the minutes are approved, 3-0-1. Thank you. We have the January 28th regular meeting minutes.
I don't mind. I move to accept the January 28th, 2025, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ruder made a motion. Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor? Minutes approved, 4-0-0. And I believe this is the last one, the March 11th regular meeting minutes.
February.
February, thank you. Thank you so much. Jumping ahead.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from the committee meeting from February 11th.
Second.
Mr. Camfield made a motion. Mr. Ruder, I mean, Mr. Irman seconded. All in favor?
Next.
I'm sorry?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay. All in favor? It was three, okay. All against? And all abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, the meeting's passed, 3-0-1. Okay, up next, we have the Metco Advocacy Day. This is an event that some of us attended, and we have a student here who attended with us, Ian Williamson. If you'd like to come up to the table here and join us. Thank you for coming and speaking with us today. I'm just going to speak a little bit about what the day was, and then I'd like you to tell us your feelings about it.
Okay.
Because you did great at that meeting. So the Metco Advocacy Day, that is a day that Metco invited representatives from their 32 participating districts to come and speak at the State House. So we had superintendents, Metco coordinators, school committee members, parents, students, as well as local legislators, and they came together in support of Metco making an ask of $33 million for our fiscal year '26. This will be a $3.1 million increase over the previous year. Last year, they only got half a million budget increase, and it's very hard to work with a budget like that. We're having difficulty supporting staff, the increase in student transportation, the increase in student and special education. For these reasons, they want to increase the budget, and they're going to, they're asking that they leverage it from the fair share funds, which are meant for school and transportations, and Metco would get the bill on this. So hopefully, this approves through the State House. Now, we had Chantal Wiley there, our Metco coordinator. She was able to join us, and we had Jessica. She was a Metco Ahearn student parent. We had Ian Williamson, and we had Jayden Jean, who also joined us. Sarah and I joined as school committee members, and Nate had the unique perspective of looking through two lens. He looked it through a school committee lens and through a legislative lens. So I would be interested in hearing your take on it, but what did you think of the Metco Day?
Honestly, I thought it was really great. I really got to share my experience personally, coming out to Foxborough, and I really got to share how much, like, Foxborough really helped me specifically with, you know, trying out new sports, meeting new people, you know, getting to try a whole bunch of new things. And what was really important to me about going to the State House and talking to all these representatives and seeing all these people who kind of do the same thing as me is that not everybody had it as great as I did. And so, you know, Braintree, Braintree High School, who is also part of the Metco program, we got to hear a lot about their side, and hearing that from, honestly, first, from somebody who was in the Metco program, who had it pretty great coming to Foxborough specifically, that's something that I got to share and something that I got to be really grateful about and got to share my experiences with. And I mean, honestly, it was a, it was a situation, it was a place where I could have only gotten to if it wasn't for Foxborough specifically. There was a lot of schools there who didn't have student representatives like me or who had many who, you know, had more money and, you know, whatnot, and it was just a really amazing experience for me.
Thanks for going.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. I also want to point out that he also shared experience at the meeting, and he did it on the fly, and you did a great job. We really appreciate you sticking, standing up and speaking for our school and our program.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? For you, for Ian, yes?
Thank you for coming and speaking today. It's not easy speaking in front of a group and up at the State House. I actually spoke with some of the legislators after the whole day was over, and they all remember exactly what you said. So what you said was very moving, and everyone remembers it, so we appreciate you on behalf of Foxborough for speaking about your perspective and what it means to you. You're right, I do look at it through multiple perspectives, and I think Metco's a very essential program and very important to the town, and I would urge anyone to just reach out to their local legislators and let them know what their thoughts are and how they'd prefer Metco be funded further in the upcoming legislative fiscal year.
Yes, actually, I believe if you go to the Metco website, they have a form where you can send a letter to your local legislation as well. So if anybody's interested in doing that, they should do so, because again, this is a terrific program. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? For you?
I would just say, I know that we have a fabulous picture that's going to be shared, but because we're going out of order, we're going to show that picture a little bit later.
Okay. So, Ian, sorry, you'll miss the picture. We'll email it to you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you very much for coming tonight and coming to the Metco meeting. We are actually very, we are very, very proud to have you represent Foxborough. You did a great job. We really appreciate everything you've done here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not surprised that you represented us so well either.
Up next, we have the Teachers, the Teaching and Learning Highlight, the Peer Mediation Training. For that, we have Ms. Karen Fraser, Dr. Jim Donovan, Ms. Marie Foley, and Ms. Melissa Henry. Oh, and it looks like we have students with us.
Students too.
Oh, this is the best part. So excited. Pull up some chairs, please, come up.
Awesome.
Great, well, thank you very much for having us. We're here to talk about our peer mediation program at the Ahearn at the high school. Emma, will you pass me that? Thank you. So just briefly, peer mediation programs existed at one point in both the middle school and the high school, but there had been a gap in their existence, and so this year, we partnered with Metro West Mediation to do some training for the middle school and the high school. I'm sorry, I'll move closer. For the middle school and high school students, we trained, I think 32 students were trained between the two buildings. This gives the three days of training in January and February, and our staff advisors, Mrs. Henry and Mrs. Foley, actually did five days of training, which was extraordinarily comprehensive. And so what we wanted to do here, I promised Mrs. Fraser I'd make at least one mistake when I did it, right there. So the program really has two main goals, which is to help our students be able to resolve peer-to-peer issues that impact their ability to kind of function during the school day and to really have the ability for our students to initiate it and have it to be student facilitated to come to resolutions without things escalating. So we have a bunch of students here to talk a little bit about our experience and -- First up, the middle school.
I'll just jump in quickly. We did have 20 middle schoolers. We have a number of our students here. They're excited to share about their experience with both the training, and we've had a few students who've actually started hosting some of the peer mediation sessions, which has been great. Leo here did our very first one, actually. So here you see our full group, and then, actually, it might help just to see the next couple of slides. We just wanted to share some pictures of what the training actually looked like, so we had Metro West Mediation come in and meet with the students. It was a very interactive training. The students will speak to that, but just to give you a sense of, you know, who was there and what it looked like, so. I don't know, Leo, if maybe you want to start and share?
Our first mediation we had was with me and my friend Rocco, and it was these two kids who got into like a little fight, and instead of going to like, usually what happens when they get into a fight, they get suspended or you have to go down to Dr. Marco and like get in trouble. But instead, they came down to us, and we've like, kind of like, resolved the issue, and now they're still kind of friends, but like, instead of like getting suspended and getting like a lot of trouble, they resolved their issue like, like with themselves, and yeah, they're still really good friends like now.
Maybe some of our other students could speak to what the training experience was like. No one want to jump in?
I thought that it was a good learning experience for like all of us to be able to open our minds and see how other people are thinking and how we can help resolve their issues without like escalating it, and then I haven't had a peer mediation yet with anyone, but I think it definitely helped me to like, with my own situations, like helping like my friends with some of their problems and also just in general, just helped me a lot.
And to add on to that, to what she said, it also helped me with my experiences as well. Just having like an open mind going into it as well definitely helps. I learned a lot of strategies. One of my biggest takeaways from it was how to be like a good listener and how to just like help people through anything without questioning them, just like asking good questions. And we haven't had a mediation yet, but I definitely feel prepared and ready, and I think this program will be really great.
Can I just ask one thing before we get, so can you, would you guys mind introducing yourselves, because it would be helpful? I don't, I don't actually know any of you, and I would love to know your names if you wouldn't mind.
I'm all Leo Fitzgerald.
I'm Debbie Kadrin.
My name's Abby Collins.
I'm Emma Fissler.
I'm Camilla Ramones.
I'm Kayla Callaway.
Thank you very much.
So I also happen to have a mediation too. I had the second one. Me and my friend Grace were mediating these two fifth graders, and what I found really interesting is that they fight over very small things, but it was really fun being able to see like, wow, they really, they fought over this and now, because they immediately apologized after explaining their problem, and they were, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I did that. And I found it really cool to see how they just easily forget what happened, but it was really nice being able to listen, to ask them questions, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Have any questions for?
Just in terms of mechanics of it, how does, how do you pick up a mediation? Is it, like, how do you all get your folks?
So I think we're pretty similar at the middle and high school and still working some of our processes out as it's new, but as of right now, a referral will come through either our guidance department or typically the assistant principals if there's a conflict between students. And then, right now, Mrs. Henry is taking the lead at the middle school in our guidance department and working through the list to try to make sure that all of our peer mediators who've been trained have an opportunity to participate in a mediation, but hopefully moving toward having some sort of a referral process and even students being able to sign themselves up when that's, when that's needed, so. Let's speak to the high school. And yeah, so it's similar at the high school. I think it's important to note too, though, that the mediators are never doing it alone. So there's always two, and then myself or Mrs. Henry, to help sort of facilitate, to sort of say, when you pull about and you have a mediator caucus, to then be able to say, okay, what do we need to discuss? What other questions do we need to ask? How do we kind of want to pull all this together? And so I think that's one of the benefits, one of the main benefits of the program, is that no one's sort of in it alone to do it, and making sure that the kids know, you know, that they don't have a bias, that they don't know the kids, that they're not friends with the kids, and sort of working through all that, understanding confidentiality and what that means, understanding perspective-taking. I think the training itself really lent itself to gaining a better sort of knowledge and understanding about where people are coming from and being able to help them kind of address that and figure this out, and like you were saying, right, work through those, what might seem like really small problems that sort of get blown up into bigger ones. So I think it is important to put that, that in there, that no one's sort of doing this alone, and there'll be a rotation through so that everybody gets a chance to sort of put the skills that they learned to, to work.
Nice. And did I hear, is it, what year is this? First one, right?
Yeah, this is the first year. We were all just, just trained this year, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Seeing these programs flourish in schools and hearing that the high schoolers, you guys haven't had one yet, you will, and all these kids at the middle school who got used to it, because sometimes your fifth and sixth graders kind of are more apt to jump in than maybe a high school student is, but as that group of people moves up to the high school, you're going to start seeing it more and more and more, and you know, the training will kick in. And the only other personal note, because when I was in high school, I was trained as a peer mediator too, is to, I think, go off your point. Yeah, it will help in friend groups later. You'll find yourself in the middle of a lot of things, sounding reasonable, so. I'm glad you all went through it and dedicated your time to it. That's excellent. I don't have any more questions, but I'm chair.
This is how it works. He starts, I go next. So during the training, because that's the piece that really fascinates me, is as Mr. Ruder said, the skills that you're learning now will serve you for the rest of your life and will therefore also serve your social circles, which they're all very fortunate to have you in them. But during the training, was there anything that really stuck out to you that you hadn't expected to understand what mediation really was and what the key skills are?
So I never fully understood, like, listening is basically just hearing people, right? There isn't much to it, but mediation really helped me understand, like, listening is really also involving yourself. For example, what we learned is this listening triangle where they talk and like, you, eye contact is one of the biggest things. So they know that, like, you're listening, you're, because maybe they'll shut down if they think that you're not listening. So we learned that first we listen, then we ask like, hey, is this, so what I'm getting from this is blank, and then we ask questions like, do you have anything else to say? Hey, I just need to clarify, is this what happened? Stuff like that. So I really, it really helped me be a better listener, like, that was one of the best things for mediation for me, because I'm not very good at listening, but today I find myself like using those skills in real life, and I'm like, wow, like, that's good.
So just a comment, clearly, if that's all the stuff that you retained at that level of detail, you're a really good listener. Just don't ever say that about yourself, because you're really good at listening.
Another thing we learned was like open-ended questions, and you know, really like allowed it, like, be like, hey, like, do this, I'll help you. You have to make them find like, like, think of it for themselves. Like, one of our, like, practice ones was like, this kid wasn't doing his homework because he was like on his phone too much, and you just want to say like, get off your phone, you can do your homework, but you have to like make him like figure out like, oh, maybe if I were to like get off my phone, it would help. So asking like open-ended questions, being like, have you, have you ever thought like what would happen maybe if you like, kind of like dissed yourself from your phone? And they're like, yeah, like, maybe that would help with my work a little bit, and then be like, they, they get their own problem, like, they fix their own problem, you're like, it's there.
Sometimes it's just moving the, moving the line just a little bit, and then it all clears up, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what you found with the, with the story that you shared us at the very beginning. So just that one little movement, and everything starts to flow. It's really cool. Anybody else?
To add on to what Leo said.
Please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I find myself like interpreting information better just through the listening techniques we've used, and just using those questions in general just gives you like a better understanding in everyday life. Also, being like not afraid to ask people for clarification, like, did I get that right is definitely one of the biggest parts of mediation, in my opinion, so I think that's definitely helpful.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just jump in and say, I look forward to seeing this program grow year after year. Obviously, this is just the first year, so there's going to be natural kinks, but I'm excited to see next year and the year after growing and expanding, because it's going to help a lot of students at both schools.
And I agree with that. I'm, I love seeing all these programs flourish and grow at, at the middle school and at the high school. You know, every year, it just seems to get better and better. Mrs. Fraser, like, the changes I've seen since, you know, since you've started to this point, it's just been tremendous, and even Dr. Donovan, like, all the changes we're seeing in the high school. I want to thank all of you students for taking part of this, and again, I do believe this is going to make everybody more empathetic, and I like that you all are focused on the listening. That's going to help a lot. That's something that we all need to work on is, you know, as human beings, being more listening. We're usually too focused on what we want and what we're doing, so thank you very much for coming and speaking to us.
And just to jump in for a second before, before everyone heads home for the night, thank you very much for volunteering as peer mediators this year. It's a really important program. We're very excited to have this grow, and I know there are students, including our student representatives, that were interested in learning more about peer mediation, and this is going to be a program that we're going to be able to continue to train students. There'll be a refresher training next year, so you won't lose track of those skills that you've built, and then also opportunities each year to train a new group of kids. So this is a program that we feel is really important, that we want to invest in, and we really want to build those leadership skills in our students and that ability to navigate conflict for, for our secondary students. So really excited. Welcome to the Peer Mediation Club. We're really excited that you volunteered for it, and, you know, wish you luck with, with mediating those issues with kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So up next, we have the superintendent update.
All right, just a couple of quick updates. One, you may have noticed in the March Spotlight that it was highlighted at the high school, our first robotics team, and that they were getting ready to start having some competitions. Well, they are strong out of the gate, so they were at WPI this weekend, and they won the Rookie All-Star Team Award during that competition. So that's annually given to a first-year team, who I'll just read, who demonstrates strong partnership effort and effectively implements the mission of first and inspiring students to learn about science and technology, including team growth, preparation, sponsorships, technical mentorship, and demonstration of gracious professionalism and appropriate safety practices. So they actually placed 20th out of 38 teams, so they had a great showing, which is awesome, and they've been invited to the New England Championships in Springfield in two weeks, so we wish them the best of luck as they go forward. And then again, this is something you'll remember from school committee when you accept the Meditech grant that we received. That is what is the financial support behind that group, and then obviously, too, it takes the support of some fantastic advisors, and that's Dr. Matcharnick at the high school as well as Mr. James. So we thank them for having awesome advisors to lead them there and talking about coming strong out of the gate, so.
Awesome.
Congratulations to our cheerleaders from the Cheerleading Internationals. So they recently placed first at the AmeriCheer International Championship in the small colored category, so they always have a strong representation and do not disappoint, which is awesome. Recently, there were a number of us that attended, Nathan and Michelle, as well as Sarah, the Legislative Breakfast that was sponsored with our legislators but by the Massachusetts. We have our roundtable, so we're in the South Shore Roundtable for the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and that was an opportunity to really speak to some of these things, like what you were talking about before with Metco Advocacy and where the needs are with where schools are struggling, and advocate for those dollars to be able to continue to do the work that we do every day, as far as from the legislative piece. Dr. Burrows, she spoke at that presentation, so I wanted to give you a chance to give a little bit of information, because you represented the South Shore Superintendents really well at the same time as representing Foxborough.
Sure, sure. So I do meet monthly with the Legislative Committee for the Superintendents Association, so one of the things that, that we do is prepare for this annual Legislative Breakfast, and myself and a couple of the other representatives, other local superintendents and assistant superintendents presented the, the budget priorities and the legislative priorities that are recommended coming from the Superintendents Association. For me personally, my part in that presentation was presenting federal and state policy and talking through some, some of the federal budgetary concerns that we might have coming at us in the next couple of months, and then also talking through some state legislative priorities. So talked about the MCAS and the competency determination and the graduation council, as well as the Massachusetts District Attorney has spoken about having a statewide cellphone ban in schools, so spoke to that a little bit as well. But, but overall, I think our breakfast was really well attended. We had a number of state reps that, that came as well, and I've already had follow-up conversations with a number of those representatives, including Senator Feeney and Representative Chason's office as well.
If you're ready for some music, Bandorama's coming up Thursday night. We've got that, as far as the Ahearn and the high school bands. And Saturday, the Ahearn Carnival. I attended the last PAC meeting, and so much work and volunteerism goes into being able to put that on along with students' help as well, so thank you to all of our volunteers that are putting on that carnival. It's a, it's an important fundraiser for the Ahearn for enrichment activities for our students. So that was nice to hear, the ins and outs at the PAC meeting. And then our next parent caregiver events coming up. Email went out about that to register ahead of time, and that is going to be on executive functioning, and we have some of our own awesome teachers that are going to be presenting there. Jackie Antonelli, who's in Ahearn, Jackie, I should say, Jackie Antonelli is an Ahearn reading specialist, as well as Sam Timpany, grade five classroom teacher, and they're going to be sharing some of the amazing efforts that are taking place at the Ahearn when it comes to enhancing students' executive functioning skills and really building on, when we think about not just academic, but also the social emotional skills. And if you see that in, when you walk through classrooms and the work that's being done, and it's the consistency, I think, from classroom to classroom, and hearing students talk about helping them to be organized and to really think about what they're doing and how they're attacking, you know, their day or their class or their home. you know, their day or their class or their homework or just the work that they have. It's, it's a great framework. And, um, it really is the 21st century skills that we think of with students. And they're really working hard, the teachers, to develop that with our students. And again, the consistency that's so important. And parents will be able to learn a lot from, um, Ms. Antonelli and from Ms. Timpany during that, uh, academy that's taking place on Wednesday, April the 2nd, from 6:15 to 8:15. And it will be in both places. So, when we think about Metco headquarters for our Boston families or any of our families that happen to be in Boston and that's more convenient for them, that they can attend there and then at the, um, middle school as well. So, other than that, the only other thing is a tier-focused monitoring, monitoring report. If you want to touch upon our news that we just received.
Sure. Uh, so, if you remember, last year, Mr. Mike Lazick and myself, uh, had presented the work that we'd been doing, uh, for the tiered focus monitoring, um, review that, uh, he and I had participated in last school year out of the Office of Public School Monitoring with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If you recall, uh, we had a great report outside of just one indicator that we needed to work on for this school year. Uh, so during the school year, we had a corrective action plan, uh, where we needed to implement training on a bias and curriculum reflection tool. So, um, we've been doing that throughout the year. Uh, we began in, in, uh, in November, during our November PD Day. Several of our departments, uh, uh, launched that training. And in March, we completed the training for the remainder of our departments. Uh, and I had to submit a, uh, final report to the state, uh, earlier this week. We found out that, uh, we've met all the standards and we are officially off the corrective action plan. So, uh, we can move forward.
Good news.
And then, sorry, can you remind us just, because I do remember the report, but I'm, given that we're about to hear from, uh, Special Ed update and other things, I, I get mixed up too easily sometimes. Uh, the tiered focus monitoring, what's under that umbrella?
So, this time around, it happens every couple of years. This time around, it was a civil rights review, which was the, specifically the piece that, that I took care of. Uh, and then there is a, a special education side to the review. I believe, uh, there were, there were a couple of indicators looking at, uh, IEPs and, and, um, uh, I believe special education programming and locations for this time around. Am I correct? Uh, so, uh, it, it varies. Uh, they alternate indicators so that they don't overwhelm you with all of the indicators all at once.
Sure.
So, we had, most of the civil rights had to do with handbook updates, if you remember.
Yep.
So, that was a, a, a lot of the, uh, updating that we had done. We did some website updates as well. Uh, and then that civil rights piece and making sure that we were in compliance with our civil rights policies.
Thank you. Nice reminder.
The only other piece, other than the concert this week? There's a spring concert next week. Spring feels like it's in the air. And term three comes to a close for our middle school and high school at the end of next week. So, the year is starting to get faster.
It is, definitely. Thank you. Up next, we have the School Committee Student, um, Representatives. Uh, we have Stevie Strawhan here. And, uh, Yasmin Bugosa is unable to join us tonight.
Okay, so, starting it off, we have World Language Culture Night, which is going to be Monday, April 14th. It's going to be 6 to 8 o'clock. It's held in the high school cafeteria. It's a really fun event that the whole family will enjoy. We've had it for years. It's been great every year that we've had it. Um, we have so many people coming to volunteer and have tables and share their cultures. Um, it's an entirely student-run event this year, which is completely new. This is the first year that we're doing it. Um, it's actually Yasmin is, Bugosa is the one who's, uh, running it this year. She's the head of it. Um, she's not here today, so I'm allowed to say that. And, uh, next year, there's going to be a Costa Rica trip at the high school. They are starting the informational meetings right now. Feel free to contact, uh, Senorita Smith or Mr. Champlin with, uh, any questions about that. There is going to be a talent show on Wednesday, April 2nd, to support the class of 2026. Um, all funds will go to them, helping with the prom and any senior, um, activities. And then to finish it off, as always, there is 55 days until summer.
Thank you very much, Stevie. Any questions? Okay, up next, we have the Fiscal Year '25 Budget Update with the Business Manager, Karen Sheridan.
Okay, um, so tonight, I'm going to be presenting the FY '25 Budget to Date. Uh, the report is, uh, through March 17th, so it's, uh, pretty close. Um, uh, going forward, we'll be presenting, um, Budget to Dates quarterly. Uh, this year, uh, with being new, I've spent a lot of time reviewing all of your data. I've gone through your general fund, your revolving funds, your grants, uh, all the information. Uh, so, um, that's the reason that this is the first Budget to Date. Uh, I never want to do a Budget to Date unless I feel confident in the Budget to Date that I'm going to be reporting.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, we'll start right here. So, um, the first slide. So, this year's FY '25, um, budget is $42,092,742. Go to the next slide. Uh, so here you see the FY '25 budget. Uh, the expended to date is $23,362,334. Uh, the accumbered to date is $15,951, uh, with a year-to-date balance of $27,79408. Uh, so, if you did the percentage of the budget expended without the encumbrances, then you've expended 55.5% of your budget. But it's really important to make sure that you, in particular, encumber your payroll because that's not giving you a real accurate read of your projection of what your year-end would be. So, what I like to do is make sure I'm projecting to see if the year ended today, what would I be in? So, um, at this point, you've expended 93.40%. So, you can see the real difference when you encumber your payroll, um, it, that 93.4%. Uh, so here, um, you'll see, when we did the budget presentations, we, um, presented the budget according to the way that the Department of Education has their DESI function codes. Um, so here again, I decided that would be the way that I would present this Budget to Date. Uh, so, uh, if you look at the categories, um, the instructional services, um, so that's the largest, uh, percent. So, the instructional services currently, um, is 77.07% of the total expended and encumbered to date. Uh, so this is the category that all the direct student services are. Uh, so it should be the largest piece of the pie, and it is the largest piece of the pie. So, this would include your instructional staff, your professional development, your materials, your guidance, psychological services, textbooks, all really the meat of educating a child. Uh, the second ca- category, uh, other school services is the second largest, and that's at 8.79%. Uh, so this category will include like your nursing services, your transportation, your lunchroom monitors, athletics, student activities, uh, and your school security or resource officers, okay? Uh, in this particular area, there's only one area that I'm watching in your entire budget, and that is transportation. Uh, so, transportation is an area with your new union contract, but might be a little over budget. But that does not mean that your entire budget's going to be over. But I am watching that one area, and that is transportation. Uh, operations and maintenance of plants would be next, and that is 609% of the encumbered and expended to date. Uh, so, uh, the area that I'm watching in, uh, operations and maintenance of plants is really to get a better idea on budgeting your utilities. All right, so, uh, this district has, um, solar credits, uh, for your electricity. So, I've been really trying to dig into your electricity, look at the solar credit, and, um, work with the town to make sure we're getting the best use of those solar credits. Uh, so, I don't really have any issues with going over budget in that area, but I do want to make sure that I get more information to be able to really better budget for the future years. So, that's with the operations and maintenance of plants. Uh, district and leader, leadership and administration is 5.69% of this. And that's the area that has your school committee expenditures, your superintendent, your finance department, and your district-wide technology. Uh, programs, um, with other school districts is at 2.11%. Um, that's the added district tuition for the special education students. Uh, so currently, we have allocated all of our circuit breaker. Um, so, it, that's already out of the general fund. It's already allocated in circuit breaker. And there is a later slide that I'll show you where we are with circuit breaker. Um, so, um, the reimbursements, so, um, in this area, we're trying to, at the moment, um, we have enough in that area to, your history has been to try to prepay, um, a few months of the added district. And currently, uh, you look like you're on track for that, to be able to do that again. But again, we'll be watching through the end of the year to see that. But that is the area that I'm watching on that, to see if we can do some prepays. That depends if we get some more students in, whatever. So, at the moment, it looks like we may be able to do that. Um, the final one is benefits and fixed charges. So, that is at, uh, 0.25% of this expended. And that is your employee separation cost, which would include your vacation and the sick leave buyback for retirees, and also the student insurance. All right, uh, so that's that. Uh, the next slide, it kind of shows you this in a different picture of a pie chart. So, you really can see, um, that instructional piece. It's really a big piece of this budget, is that instructional piece. All right, um, and slide six. Uh, so slide six, I pulled out payroll versus expenditure to date, all right? So, in your budget for FY '25, the payroll is 84% and the expenditures is 16%. Currently, with the, um, expended encumbrance to date, uh, that is moved up to payroll is 90% and the expenses is 10%. But you're going to see that fluctuate as we go forward in the year because of law, it, most of the payroll is encumbered, all right? Even on the hourly, so in your municipal financial system, the hourly employees, you're not able to encumber them, but we did estimates on going forward for the rest of the year. And we did do that with this budget report, which put some estimates on the hourly employees. Um, so, we're, you know, pretty confident, we have some good estimates on the payroll. But then you've got the expenditures that, as we go forward, they're going to be spending more, so all of that is an encumbered. So, you may see that. So, it's going to be interesting to see at the end of the year if we're going to be close to what we had budgeted on that or if we're going to be higher or lower. All right? The other thing, um, can you go back for one second? I've got, the other thing on this slide is, um, I also did expenditures and encumbrances to date with general education versus special education. And so currently, uh, general education is at 74.46% and special education is at 25.54. Again, as we go through the year, some of these things will fluctuate. But that's why I really like to see the picture in time, and this is your picture in time. Uh, so the next slide, the next slide, this is where we have the circuit breaker and the added district tuition. So, in FY '24, you carried over $1,367,286. Um, your reimbursements to date, the anticipated, is $1,429,641. Uh, we have received three out of the four payments. Um, the added district tuition applied toward the circuit breaker to date. Um, as I told you, we applied that already, is the $1,367,286. And you'll see that's exactly what your carryover is. And that's kind of what you, that's your ideal budgeted situation. And that's, um, what this district has been aligning with, is trying to keep that. What revenue you get in, because you have two years to spend, is what you're going to budget for the next year. So, for fiscal year '25, we seem pretty much in line to do that. Um, and then the, um, year-to-date estimated balance at the moment is the $1,429,641. Uh, so, we're doing pretty good in that circuit breaker area to align with the budget that we have for FY '26. Um, the other thing on this slide is that the added district students to date, um, that we have is 28. All right? If anybody has any questions at any time, you can stop me. Um, one other thing on, on the circuit breaker is that, um, for this year, you do get 75% reimbursement for the tuition and instruction, which is the highest rate that they have available. Uh, and thus far, it was only 44% on transportation. There has been a little bit of talk at Masbowl that might raise, um, but that depends. So, at the end of the year, you may get a little bit more reimbursement. But currently, it's only at the 44%. Um, the next slide is the Medicaid, no, before that, the Medicaid funding. Okay, the Medicaid program is that school-based Medicaid program that offers LEAs an opportunity to receive federal fundings, um, to offset costs for providing certain Medicaid-covered direct services in a school setting. Uh, these are federal funds, uh, and the revenue is part of the town general government receipts. So, the, this revenue is deposited into, into the town receipts. But I think it's important to watch this because it is, um, something that, um, goes to the pot for the entire town. Um, and it is generated, um, by the work that the schools, um, does, that the school do for mostly the special education students. Um, so, uh, currently, you can see on here, in FY '23, the Medicaid funds that you receive was $1,02737. In FY '24, it was $74,699. And currently to date, we have gotten three out of four quarters, and we're at $48,199. So, FY '25 appears to be aligning with, um, about what the FY '24 was. Um, but, uh, it's important to note that we have some Medicaid, um, uh, training that we have signed up with, um, with our consultants. So, the reason for the training was kind of twofold. We have a lot of new staff here, so when we're doing the Medicaid, the information that they need to do this, um, funding, we wanted to make sure that everybody was trained properly on it. And then the second thing is, was to try to pick their brains to see if there's some other areas that maybe we can help to increase this revenue. So, we do have a training this week on that. Um, so, we, um, we'll keep you informed on that. But it, I'm hoping that we can find some areas that we can increase this funding. Um, at the very least, make sure we're accurate, really, reporting the information that they need to get the most that we can out of this Medicare funds. Uh, the next one is the revolving funds. Uh, so the revolving funds seem, um, to be in good shape. Uh, and this slide, um, shows you the balances to date in the revolving funds that have the budget offsets. Uh, so, you've got the athletic revolving, um, that has that budget offset of 20,000. So, that balance is $154,117. And so, that budget offset is for coaching stipends, and that has been partially, um, offset. There's still a little bit, um, for the final quarter, um, to, um, put that into the revolving fund. Uh, adult education has 10,000 as a budget offset, and that has been fully applied. And that is for utilities. Uh, summer school, 10,000, that also has been fully applied, and that is for utilities. Uh, preschool tuition, um, is for the preschool part of the preschool coordinator. Um, and that is pretty close to being applied with the encumbrances and the payroll to date. Extended day, um, is 50,000 is a budget offset. That has been fully applied, and that's for utilities as well. Um, off-duty transportation, 10,000 is a budget offset, it's been fully applied, and that is for fuel. And then we already discussed that circuit breaker there. Uh, one thing I do want to note about the preschool tuition. Uh, so the current balance in the preschool revolving and the projections that we've been doing for, um, FY '26, so we've been doing some profit and loss on your, um, preschool revolving to kind of get an idea of what the future's going to look for preschool involving, revolving. Um, and despite the preschool rates, um, being below the surrounding towns, uh, we feel like in FY '26, we don't feel like that's a year that we have to increase the rates. But FY '27, we'll probably be coming forward with, um, some, uh, rate, gradual rate increases because we are below the surrounding towns. And by FY '27, uh, your balances probably will need to increase those rates. Um, so, because we did in FY '26, as you recall, we did increase the, um, it, we added, we were just paying a .50 of the preschool quarter. We're now paying a full-time of the full, the preschool coordinator. Um, and then we also have, um, some, a nurse in there, a partial of a nurse. So, we'll be watching that and come forward, um, in FY '26 to give you an idea of our recommendation for the, um, gradual increase for that preschool tuition. Okay? The next slide is the grant funding. Uh, so on the grants, uh, so this slide shows you the FY '25 grants to date. Uh, so the, the district has been lucky to get grant awards this year in the amount of $1,488,911. Uh, all the grants have been accepted by the school committee, uh, to date. Um, and this slide indicates the funding source for each grant, the award, and the balance to date, um, on those grants. And the final slide is going to be, if anybody has any questions.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for the level of detail, for the opportunity to get more regular updates on what is happening, where we are, and then the level of attention that you and your team were taking to re-categorize in the MUNIS system. I know that's, that is probably very time-consuming. And I just really appreciate all the work that's being done to give us more transparency into where we are throughout the year in our budget. So thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, with my staff, and kudos to my staff, that we've been really working diligently. And we feel really confident with the way that the general fund is right now, with the payroll encumbrances. So, and we've been working on the revolving funds and the grants. So I'd like to give some kudos to my staff, because it takes a team. So.
Certainly does. Thank you.
Any else? No?
Question?
Oh, yep.
You mentioned with the transportation reimbursements being at 44%, something like that, right? How do we raise that? I know, is that, is that at the state level?
That was actually one of the conversations that we had at the legislative breakfast, to try and increase that reimbursement rate, circuit breaker, as well as transportation reimbursement. And, and again, Michelle, you had mentioned earlier that Metco wanted to tap into that fair share tax, the millionaire's tax, in order to fund their budget increase. We're doing a similar thing on the superintendent's association side, to try and advocate for using those funding, that funding source, in order to increase the reimbursement rate. I'm sorry for jumping in.
No, that's okay. The one thing about the transportation is, the tuition and instruction has to reach that 75%. So it's subject to appropriation. So it has to reach that 75% before the transportation is hit, which is why it's that. But like I said, at the last MasBowl, they did say that they think that that may be increasing. We have gotten 75% in previous years.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be shocked to see it reach higher, even for this year and next year. So.
I appreciate the context. And thank you for your advocacy on that. So, that's all I had.
Thank you, Karen. I definitely feel like you now know this budget inside and out. You have rolled it around.
Thank you.
So up next, we have the special education programs update with student service director, Mr. Corey Michaelazek. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. And could you please introduce your team?
Absolutely. One step ahead of me, I just wanted to take a look at the pictures first.
Absolutely. Let's do this.
So just some pictures. I always like to include pictures in the moment through my presentations, as you'll see. Top left-hand corner is Mrs. Stanton, working with a few students at a standing desk, which is, speaks into what our inclusion classrooms kind of look like, and the furniture that we able to provide over the last several years to increase our inclusive opportunities within those inclusion classrooms. I'm all about the environment, what the environment needs to look like, how the setup is, and what materials and supplies we're purchasing and supporting teachers with to encompass this type of environment. In the, in the top middle there, it's myself with another student, Ms. Frazier at the middle school, and her team developed a unified gym class that takes place every single day. It's absolutely remarkable. And I was able to stop in, play a little bit of basketball, take the suit jacket off, sweat a lot, but it's okay. Top right-hand corner is one of our special education teachers, Ms. Foley, who was here, if you remember, the last school committee meeting, presenting from the DLC. She's providing some inclusion services and, you know, providing some support to teaching students on our communication devices that they utilize within those classrooms. Bottom left is in our magnificent OT and PT space over at the Burrow School, a small group activity. Middle is Ms. Ferraro, the elementary team chair, and Mr. Worth, the building principal at the Burrow, also in our wonderful OT and PT room. And the far right is a couple of our related service providers after a PD and training that they received, they had talked about in the last school committee meeting as well, asserts training. And so that's, that's a part of it. Okay? Okay. Some introductions, Michelle. Corey Michaelazek, Director of Student Services.
Rose Ferraro, elementary team chairperson.
Kim McDowell, district writing facilitator, to include the added district.
Matt Strubel, special education department head at the high school.
So two members, Ms. Kathy Joyce, our preschool coordinator, and Ms. Carrie Quinn, our middle school team chair, weren't able to make it tonight, but certainly here in spirit. What I will say and start off my presentation with, and I always do every single year, because I'm a firm believer in that, one, I'm very, very lucky to have the team of colleagues I have sitting here at the table. But most importantly, what we're going to talk about tonight is a direct outcome, and I talk about it all the time. But, you know, public education is really, is a direct correlation with, with the staff and the teachers that we put in front of kids, right? And so it's actually tenfold when it comes to special education. And so what I can say is, our special education staff are by far the most talented, most knowledgeable, skilled professionals that we have. And so the work that we've been able to do over the last five years that I've been here is a direct result of, of all of their work that they put in every single day, 180 days in the school year. Okay, this is a little touchy. Just quick agenda, just going to talk about a little bit of data, talk about successes. Certainly are areas of challenge that we'll continue to have every year. And then some programmatic updates and enhancements. I think what's so really great about special education is, is the job is never done, right? The job is never done as it relates to evolving needs of our students. And so what you'll see here, over time, is that we're not going to have changes every single year, but we're going to have, we're going to have a complete increase and enhancement to our programs that currently exist. We're in a really, really good spot as it relates to our staffing, as it relates to our programs and meeting the needs of our kids. But as well, what you'll see year to year is really something similar, but also just looking at what we're able to do enhancing every single year, and really improving our work every single day. That's kind of what our mindset is. And we'll start. So Dr. Burrows will be very, really proud of me including some data in his presentation. But it really speaks to our story over the last four or five years, and what we've been able to do for really a variety of reasons, whether it be our professional development, our training, our scheduling, really look at our inclusive model and what that looks like, what we need to do to support all students within the classroom. But it really speaks very highly to the work that was done. So here is a quick data point. If you look at the last part, the 2020 to 2024, what you'll see there is students who were in inclusion settings, I have the note on the right, students who were in K-12 inclusion settings as a district, three years later, at their re-evaluation meeting, they either stayed within that placement, or they no longer, 32% of them no longer qualified for an IEP. So what that, what that really speaks to is the fact that what we're providing in the inclusive environment, because of that, students aren't receiving more restrictive services or more restrictive placements as a result of what we're able to do in that environment. In addition to that, what it also speaks to is the evaluation processes and procedures that a team chairs do every single day when they're having team meetings, is that we're able to really expand what we're able to do for students, as far as how we're evaluating students, really having, really a digital library of assessments. Now, we've really transitioned the amount of assessment opportunities that we have, but also our materials and supplies. And so a lot of it is really geared towards what our students need, what is the areas that we need to address, and what is, what is the evaluation question, right? This is really touchy. So this is just, in the state of Massachusetts, there are 13 disability categories that a student could qualify under. I'm sure this data will, will look different next year as a result of the new IEP. So previously, we were to select a primary disability, secondary disability, and even a third if we, if there was, if there was one. With the new IEP now, it is just all disabilities. There's not a primary, there's not a secondary. It is all disabilities that quantify for that student what their needs are. And so I certainly see that we're going to see some changes in our, in our disability categories over the next several years. As you'll see, there's a, a pretty small increase in our students who are being diagnosed with autism, either coming into the district, or students that we currently have within the district. But as you'll, as you'll go across, you'll see really a couple of primary categories. Certainly, our students, really with specific learning disabilities is one of our largest categories there, year to year. But also, you'll see the increase in students that, and I talked about this before, but students who are qualifying under an emotional impairment is something that we're seeing, certainly within the district, but with my colleagues across the state, this is also a trend they're seeing. So this is probably my favorite slide by far, and we should be really proud of it. So at the left, you'll see Foxborough in comparison to the right, and the state averages when it, as it relates to students on IEPs, and students who are not on IEPs. So as you'll look, from 2020 all the way to 2024, you will, you will see a very gradual reduction in students who are qualifying for special education services, from approximately 20.7 in 2020 to 18.6, which is really remarkable. And what I'm going to talk about in a little while, and what we'll kind of preview during this presentation, is, is we have a number of students that move into our district, also in IEPs, would also be reported as such, meaning that although we're continuing to reduce our numbers, we're also receiving students already on IEPs, and we're still reducing our numbers at that same rate. So if those students did not move in, our rate would be significantly below that. But you'll look at the right, you'll see a steady increase on the state side, from 18.4 to 20.2%, which is, again, the direct opposite of where Foxborough is going. So that just speaks to our story, what we've been able to do over the last several years.
So as Corey mentioned, this year is the first year that we've implemented the new IEP in the state of Massachusetts. That hasn't been updated in over 20 years, since around 2001, I believe, is when the last IEP big overhaul was. So a big undertaking for our staff, a big undertaking for our families to understand. A few things about the new IEP, it doesn't change what we do at our core for our kids, but it does change how we present that plan. Some things that are really important for you to know is, it really has streamlined that IEP process. It's really a lot more parent-friendly, I like to tell families when I explain it to them. It's less narrative, more bulleted. I think it's easier to read through. It's really focused on student strengths, and how we can leverage those strengths to help them with their areas of challenge. It's also really student-focused. The beginning of the IEP, and you'll see in a slide coming up, is really focused on what is the student's vision. And we put the student at the forefront of the IEP, as opposed to what the adults' hopes are for that student, which I think overall will help kids just in general. Big undertaking, as I said, change is hard. So the implementation of this new IEP within our district has taken a lot of work. We started working on this two, three years ago with PD, with all of our members of our staff. We've done some whole staff trainings, we've done some more tiered staff trainings. We have at every level IEP leads. So those are within each building. There are really staff that the other staff can go to for support, for, they had a higher level of training within the new IEP. They are working collaboratively with their teams to help develop the new IEPs. In addition to the new IEP, we also, this year, implemented a new, the digital system that we
Student information system.
Yes, student information system. So we switched from East Bed to Special Programs and Power Schools. So that was another change for us. So we kind of figured we'd do it all at once, which has been great, but it's a lot of work for our staff. I want to give a shout out to the ladies in the office in the special ed department for that change as well. That was a huge undertaking. But really, we've done a lot of student curriculum work over the summer. We're in preparation for this, making sure that we had exemplars for our staff to use. So it's, and we've had some family awareness and training. Overall, I think it's gone really, really well. I think we're all very proud of the IEPs that our staff have been able to help develop with our families. And they've been really student-focused, which I think the next slide will really speak to. Before we start this little video, at the start of the new IEP, there's a section that calls student vision. It used to be the parents' vision. Now we look at student vision. At the preschool and the elementary level, that's a little more challenging. Older students are part of their IEP meetings, younger students are not. So prior to having a meeting with a family, our, our staff, our teachers, and some of our related service providers are checking in with our students. You're going to see a video in just a second of one of our fourth grade student at the Burrow. Her parents gave permission to share this. It's a wonderful little video. We also, with our students that are, our youngest students, our three-year-olds, our students that are non-verbal, we also have to check in with them. And we have developed a lot of various different ways to do that, whether it be picture communication systems, checklist. It's, it's been interesting to figure out how to do that with some of our students, but it's been, been really successful, I think. And it sets a wonderful tone for a meeting, to start off remembering why we're there. So I don't know if we can start that. Yeah. Oh, no.
How do you, how do you play this within the PowerPoint?
Paul might have to push play on it.
Oh, he says, hear sound.
Sometimes it will zoom down to a PDF.
Or if we go out of presentation mode.
It's video.
We're still clicking through, so I don't know that it's a PDF.
Well, maybe we can go back to it.
It's a great video.
It's a great video. And really, but to Ms. Ferraro's point, it really speaks to the students taking ownership at these IEP meetings. That's, that's really what it's about. The students, it's their IEP, it's not the parents' IEP, or the guardian's IEP. It's really for them. And so it really speaks to exactly what, what our take is on the vision statement, how that really drives, especially at the younger levels, how it really drives the IEP. All right, we'll have to skip it.
I know, it's too bad. It's my favorite part. We'll try again later.
Thanks, Grace.
Are they trying?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll go on.
Technology's great when it works.
Yeah.
I'm going to blame Mr. Hire for this.
Yeah, nice.
No, we can't.
It's not clicking.
Cross department view.
I promise this is not me, I'm clicking.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Going back to the, because it'll save time, the slide that we all love, the percentage of enrollment, Foxborough versus state. What's, what's the thought of, what's the thought of your staff, in terms of, yeah, I don't believe I've ever seen a district with the numbers one in that direction.
Yeah. I don't know if you guys want to speak to it, you guys are part of the eligibility means.
Yeah, I can speak for high school. So in the, last year, we had 14 initials for initial evaluations for students on IEPs. And of those, only two were qualified. And of that just really speaks to the process of like, how thorough we evaluate a student with teacher reports, with our psychological and academic testing, and really reviewing, you know, the reason that student might be coming up not where they want to be in a classroom, and then like, really diving into that. We bulked up our SST teams and our MHT at the high school, and really streamlined those processes, and made sure that they get the support in the least restrictive environment possible. And I think allowing those supports to play before they jump straight to the special education testing has allowed them to make progress in the curriculum without having the need of, to involve special education.
No, that's, because I was, I was going to ask, I think if memory serves, and it rarely does for me, one of the things I think that we had talked about, I mean, you, rather, you had talked about as a staff, and we got to listen to and appreciate, was the move towards that MTSS district-wide, like, meeting kids, and you mentioned that with your SST teams, and meeting kids where they're at. And I was, I've been kind of wondering long-term, hey, is that going to have kind of a, a carryforward effect? And I'm just openly wondering, because like, the whole district has moved to that and been trained on it.
I think our instructional model, in the shift of our instructional model, when it comes to special education and tier-one support, our co-teaching environments, our co-teaching classrooms, K-12, it's more of a proactive approach. That's what kind of what it comes down to, right? We have some students that potentially could qualify for an IEP, but they coincidentally have a special education teacher already in their classroom, and they, to kind of build that in. So what we've been able to see just through instructional delivery, it drastically shifted. So MTSS is a huge component, there's a variety of reasons. But when, when, when the, when the rubber hits the road, it really comes to what is our instructional delivery look like, how are we scheduling students in their inclusion classrooms, what does that look like, how are our programs function, how they function with our students within an inclusion setting, meaning our programs are primarily, overall, a, a partial inclusion, inclusion-based model. And so we certainly have seen kids that are able to, to reach their potential and no longer qualify for an IEP, more of our needier programs. And our students with higher needs, certainly they'll continue on, on IEPs, but also our students who are on the, on the, on the brink, certainly with our model has shifted that.
Well, I think the other thing that, picking up on what you said, Mr. Michaelazek, is when you and your staff started talking to us and, and working through admin on, on expanding the co-teaching model, I believe you all had said, no, it helps, it helps everybody. Right?
Yeah, and there's certain areas, certain, I mean, certain places that we need to improve on that model, right? But I rely on our five really, really great building principals. They drive a lot of this work. So although it's a, it's a district vision, of course, but, but also they're the ones that are doing the schedules with the guidance department. They're the ones that are working with their special ed departments within their building. So it's not necessarily just a special education team, it's really kind of a team within a team. And then also in collaboration with our building principals, guidance departments at, at the secondary levels, also our building principals at the, at the elementary levels.
Well, I think when you started unfolding it, you said this is going to take a few years to do it. And I think members of this committee said, you know what, take, take five to seven. You know what I mean? And like, just like, make sure it takes. And I'm appreciative of that, of that effort. And this is just speaking as somebody who's, I've only taught in secondary schools, middle and high. I was, it's always, there's a level of, at least historically, a frustration when the reason an older kid is needing an IEP is because there's been years of this growing gap. Had the teaching model been different, we could have helped that kid. different, we could have helped that kid sooner. And, and I'm appreciative to see these numbers. Whatever the reason for it is, it's not the norm, and it's pretty remarkable and a testament to what you all are doing.
Thank you.
I think we might have the video.
Give me the timeout sign.
My favorite parts about school are making PowerPoints with my friends.
My friends.
And doing more math. By the end of the year-
I was gonna move on, but I can't even move on now, sorry.
We're so close. Those graces on the rakers.
Here we go.
Hey, hey.
Wow, good.
My favorite parts about school are making PowerPoints with my friends and doing more math. By the end of the year, I want to improve my typing and be a faster reader. When I am in middle school, I want to read longer books and write longer essays and learn more math equations, math facts. When I grow up, I want to be a teacher who helps younger kids learn.
So I'm sure you can see how that really sets the tone for the IEP meeting.
Yes, it does.
Shout out to Grace for letting us share that.
So we're just gonna start off with preschool, elementary, just programmatic updates. I'll speak to the middle school, and Mrs. Tribble will speak to the high school.
So at both the preschool and the elementary level, we've continued to expand our specialized programming and our programming in general, really, to meet the needs of the students that we have. We're seeing, while our numbers are decreasing, we still have kids with really complex needs. And we need to make sure that we're expanding those programs and meeting them where they are at this time. Part of that is a really more of a robust transition process, when I'm thinking about it, from whether it be students transitioning in from early intervention into our preschool programs, whether it be our preschool students moving into elementary, whether it be students moving between our specialized programs, making sure that we're collaborating with all those players involved, whether it be parents, whether it be related service providers and teachers. And that process is usually a year-long process for our kids. We start talking about preschool transitions in November. Also, we've seen, you know, in thinking about those increased need for really complex kids, is that increase in that AAC demands. That's Augmented Alternative Communication. And that can be anything from picture communication systems, sign language, to those devices that our students use and using technology. And that has required a lot of training of our staff. We have our, Pam Bartolini, I think she might even be here or was here, who has done a lot of support in that, especially when we think about the staff development piece for not only our teachers and our related service providers, but also our educational assistants, who do a lot of that hard work with the kids. We wouldn't be able to do it without them. So I think that having our staff in-house that's able to provide a lot of that, that professional development has been really helpful and has really expanded our students with the most significant needs, ability to communicate with their friends, with their teachers, and it's been really successful.
So for the middle school, and I know Ms. Fraser will agree with me when I say this, but when you look at the middle school, when I walk into the middle school, and I'm there quite, quite often, it is, it is absolutely incredible, the, the level of instructional engagement that our students have across that building, grades five to eight, right? And so when we start our co-teaching model, as you guys might remember, we start at the elementary level and shifted up to the middle school and now at the high school. What I will say is, you know, I've been told by a number of consultants and colleagues, you know, it takes five to seven years to, to really get this done right. And I, and I agree with that to a certain extent. But until you walk the halls of the Huron Middle School and walk in the classrooms of the Huron Middle School, you disagree with that comment, right? And my point is, is because we have a number of staff who work really, really hard in developing this model and what it needs to look like at the Huron. We've had groups of teachers from other districts come to see us, come to look at our model, rather amazed in what they're able to see. And that's a direct relation to the leadership that's at the Huron and what they're able to do with students in that building, but also meeting what our district vision is, right, is to ensure that they have the best educational experience they can possible in our building, social, emotionally and academically. And so that's what we've been able to do at the middle school. In addition to that, we've been able to transition our PAVE program, formerly known as the PAVE program. It's hard to get over that name. And I keep having to remind people sometimes, it is a step-in, step-out model, very similar to what we developed at the middle school at the elementary level. And it'll continue up through the high school in the years to come. And then also, at the middle school, where we've developed a really, really comprehensive transitional kind of support system for our students, specifically all students, but I'm, I'm looking at it from our students with disabilities and IEPs, that we create a really, along with the elementary level, a really engaging, really parent-friendly and staff-friendly way of transitioning students from level to level. I know Brent has asked questions before around what those transition kind of services and, and supports look like. Certainly, we are providing a number of transitional meetings, supports, building visits, those types of things that we're able to do. But our five-day middle school is unique in Foxborough, right? It's a five-through-eight middle school. So it's a really complex needs there. So being able to do what we, what we've done and being able to see the progress that we have seen already is, is again, I'm gonna use the word remarkable, but it truly is when, and it's validating when we have professional consultants, national, nationally-recognized people coming into our district, realizing what we've been able to do in addition to other districts. So it's not just me saying it, but people from the outside are coming in and realizing, wow, you guys are doing some good work over there.
That's great.
Uh, yeah. And at the high school, one of our main focuses has been like really on transition and like helping students navigate beyond high school. And so one thing we've done is we've really bulked up the partnership with Adalboro Enterprises, which is a vendor of Massability. And with that, you know, we are, we are offering bi-weekly trainings on vocational skills, interview skills, job place, off-skills, and resume writing. So we saw in the first semester, our eleventh and twelfth graders went through their first module, and they're currently being placed in paid internships right now. And that's been a fantastic development over the past few years. It's not something that we have actually gotten to, you know, in the, in the previous years. That's, that's a big new development. And then our ninth and tenth graders are going through their module right now, and that is about job readiness, and they do career exploration. Amanda D'Asenzo and Diane Galani, they're two special education teachers at the high school. They really deserve all the credit for this enhanced partnership, just because they were in charge of securing module dates and organizing the students, securing space, assisting with students liking the internships. And their stewardship of that partnership has really been what the, the bulk of this enhancement has been. In terms of our co-teaching, like our partnership with Lisa, Dr. Lisa Decker has continued, kind of to Corey's point about co-teaching. So we are now offering thirty-three sections of co-taught classes at the high school, and that's up from twenty-one two years ago. And that's just providing a chance for students with disabilities to be immersed among typical peers, to build real-world social skills, as well as allows greater course selections and pathways in route to high school diploma. And then Bullets Three and Five, we are, so the, the LINK program has made its way to the high school this year. And that is the, this is the inaugural class from the fifth grade. So we are looking now to expand that to tenth grade for next year. So we'll have ninth and tenth graders next year. We've partnered, partnership with Landmark for Guidance for Philosophy and, and Pedagogy in that.
Cool.
So right now, we're preparing for language support in English nine and ten, Algebra One, World History, US History, Biology, Chemistry, Geometry, and targeted academic labs around language and reading skills, as well as executive functioning. And then we've also tried to like, you know, and, and I've already mentioned Adalboro Enterprises, but we're also including mass hire in, in our partnerships as well. So some really great things and going on there.
So next two slides, and Kim can jump in on these two, but it's been no, no secret of anyone, but we certainly have had our fiscal challenges this year, okay? Just want to, you know, point a couple of points out there for, for everyone to know, the community to know, school committee to understand, as it relates to kind of state and federal funding and how it works and how we get to the numbers that we get to, right? So one of the biggest pieces, and I commend Ms. Sheridan for, for seeing the need of creating a special education stabilization fund. That's certainly something that we've talked about in my previous years here. It never came to fruition. It's something that I'm so glad that we're able to hopefully do so with a vote at town meeting. But in addition to that, it's a really, it's a really proactive way of, of, of seeing the trends that we're seeing now to protect the district. What, what people don't realize, as we talk about federal funds and the loss of federal funds, I think what we need to really remember is when the IDA was enacted, right, in nineteen seventy-five, the promise and the intention at that point in time was that every year, the, the, the increase to districts, public school districts across the state, I'm, I'm sorry, across the country, it was, it's about forty percent is the intention. So essentially, supporting forty percent of the national per-people expenditure average, okay? So, and that was supposed to incrementally go up every single year. We're now fifty years in, and we're currently at thirteen percent, right? So we're at thirteen percent as a state, we're at thirteen percent as a nation, meaning that our IDA is not fully funded and has yet to be fully funded, right? And so when, when I talk to my colleagues in all, in all the districts dealing with very similar situations that we're dealing with in Foxborough, we look at if we were fully funded, or at least fifty percent funded from federal support, we certainly would be in a different position than we are now, right? And so that's certainly a, a big piece of it. So although like our federal IDA grant says seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, yes, that's, that's right, but we should probably be at two-point-one million at that, at that rate, right? And so that would create the biggest difference for us, right, certainly. In addition to that, I think we do a, a really great job at really allocating our resources appropriately, right? And what that means is utilizing our grant funding, utilizing our operating expenditures and costs and, and budget. I work with the business office really, really closely as we support students. What is the most fiscally responsible way to support a student, maybe even moving into the district that requires a service or a support that we currently can't provide? And so being, being really responsible with our, with our town taxes, right, and being really responsive with, with the funds that we receive. Another piece to that, to this is, and we'll talk about it on the next slide, but what's really challenging, and, and, and I've talked about this before, around the fluctuating costs for special education, is right now where we are. As, as recently as today, Kim and I were informed that we have now another student moving into our district as of April fifth, who attends a collaborative program, right? And so when Karen was going over those numbers, and I've said this before to school committee publicly, is that that number could change tomorrow. And this is an exact example of that, right? And so that wasn't something that we, you know, we encompassed. That wasn't something we're used to now getting move-ins, but that was something that we certainly are seeing a complete uptick this year. That's, that's eight at this point in time. In addition to that, what really creates some, some handcuffs for us is our, our traditional in-district programming. At this point, again, we were notified today from another family that's moving in from another state. We received now two students, two additional students on IEPs. So that puts us at forty-two this year. So forty-two students have moved into the town of Foxborough as of today, and students that have IEPs. Some of them vary in services, but I would say at least forty-five percent of them, in looking at the IEPs, require specialized programming and higher-level programming. If we were, if we didn't have the programs that we currently have, and we, we stuck to our model that was in existence five years ago, our audit district costs would be triple, right? And so we're able to build programs, absorb those students that are coming in, but also supporting our Foxborough kids, right? But when students moving, and they're now a Foxborough family, now a Foxborough kid, we certainly will support them. And so that's, that's a huge piece for us, is not only our district numbers and, and the costs that are associated with that, but also the in-district kids moving in, and some of them requiring one-to-one services, some of them requiring services that we can't provide as a district currently, and I have to contract out for those services. And so certainly, special education is the most regulated area of, of education, along with the business office and the businesses and finances. But we need to remember that these, these, we don't have an option, right? This is, this is what we have to do. This is legally required. And if we don't, we're gonna be paying more illegal fees than we would in actually providing the services. Just a note about Audit District, real quickly, is around when, every single year, OSD, Operational Services Division, who sets prices, in addition to Chapter seven-six-six programs, including day, private day programs and residential programs, they're setting the costs, right? And so each year, I would see, this is my tenth year in this role, right, I would see an increase from three to four to five percent at the absolute most. If you remember in FY twenty-four, back when Mr. Yukner was here, we had a fourteen percent increase. That was a unilateral increase, by the way, of you, of OSD, and just said to the districts in the state of Massachusetts, here you go, good luck with it, right? And so you're looking at a fourteen percent increase year to year. And a student that has a, you know, for example, a residential student with a three hundred thousand dollar program, that's, you know, it's about fifty thousand dollars, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars increase. And that's, that's a whole nother placement for us. So that's just an increase, right? And if you look at our increases from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-nine to FY twenty-six, it's over twenty-two percent in three years for the same students in the same programs. That's the increase. And another challenge to add to that is, you know, our member collaborative also, you know, tries to maintain the level of services they're providing for their member districts, but also they need to increase their costs, too, right? They're adding programs, they're adding staff, they're adding different avenues to support their member districts. So their, their rates are also increasing almost at the same rate as OSD. And I've said this before, the move-in law, and so when we talk about legislative acts, the move-in law was started in nineteen ninety-nine. And the, a whole intention of the move-in law was that students, when they moved into a district and they attended a private day school program or residential school, what would happen is if they moved in after April first, so between April first and June thirtieth, if they moved in during those dates, that district would of course be financially responsible, but they would also be responsible for the next fiscal year. And that was to allow districts to essentially budget and build it into, and absorb it into the budget, and gives about a year and a half to be able to do so, right, if, if they move in within those dates. That was in nineteen ninety-nine. The cost of collaborative placements and day-school placements varied drastically during that time. And so certainly, when that law was established, yeah, that made sense. But as we're seeing more collaboratives increasing their costs and their percentages continuing to go up, and Kim will speak to this, the costs are very, very similar, right? And so the intention of the move-in law was great, but also it needs to now involve collaboratives of, of where those costs are. Kim, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I've been doing the Audit District for many years, and it's, it's a great responsibility, but also a joy for me. But I haven't seen, I mean, I think the, the move-in, the number of move-ins that we have, I mean, we've, people have all spoken of it, and for our in-districts and for our in-district programming, but for Audit District, I would say it, we've had a significant number of move-ins. That's not a new thing. I think that's historically, we've had very high percentages of students who are move-ins. The other piece is the piece around the, what Corey just spoke to, around the increases in the tuitions. That's, and, and different programs can go for rate increases at any time, and we could be informed of that. And then the major thing that I see is the transportation cost. We have vendors that are kind of throwing different rates around, and the numbers just keep going up and up and up. And we're required to do it, so those vendors know that they can do that. And so it's almost like, it's really almost unreal sometimes, some of the quotes that you get for a, a transportation quote. So I just, you know, would add that piece. And even though like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of programs, which is also relatively new, that are, that don't have openings. So particularly with very young students who have significant social-emotional challenges, that's sort of what I've seen within Foxborough, but also across the Commonwealth, where that's been a very big spike with very young students for that area of disability. And so we're finding that there's a lot of shortage in openings for students. And so that's kind of requiring us and other districts to look at other programs, potentially a more restrictive setting, because a student really needs to be placed, which is then has a impact on the cost. So those are the major highlights, of which sort of add to what Corey, and some of it being redundant, but those are the, the four major things for me that I'm seeing with the Audit District, with the move-ins being relatively steady, but the others being very different, the tuitions and the transportation and the sort of lack of openings.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Ms. McDowell, just, it, what happens in that case? So you've got a program. It's the best placement for them. There's no room at the in. What do we do?
Look at other programs.
Okay, so you just keep going down the list.
Work, work with the families. And that's, you know, especially for really young students, it's, it's, can be very stressful for families and for parents to kind of, to face this to begin with, in terms of their student going out of district, but then to hear, okay, there's no opening in this program. Okay, I typically try to approach it with at least two or three options. I don't want to overwhelm families. Some districts, you know, start with many, many options. I try to start with two or three options. And if there's not an opening, shift to the next one. It's, you know, it's definitely a challenge. And I will say that it is taking longer to place students. Those students that are struggling the most, especially with the students who have, are dysregulated and have significant social-emotional, that's where the shortages tend to be lying the most. And so unfortunately, those students are not being placed as timely as they had been in the past. And so our staff and our programs in district are working hard to do everything they can to support those students while those transitions are happening.
And, and one thing that Kim didn't mention, she's not going to, because she's not going to take credit for it, but I think she does an amazing job of being able to try to bring kids back to the district, right? With our reformed programs, what they look like, she really leads that process. And her and I have these conversations a lot, where she's bringing students back to district, and then the next day or the next week, we get a student that moves in, right? And so we're trying to build our programs, trying to, you know, allocate our resources appropriately. And sometimes we work really, really hard, and then something happens where we have a, a student that costs two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars moving into our district.
And I think that it's, it's challenging, but it's also very rewarding when students are able to go to a district, do very well, be successful, and have a lot of strong data to support that they're ready to go to a less restrictive setting and then eventually back into district. And so that's always very nice when that happens. And I've brought many students back from residential to therapeutic day to collaborative, and even back to district to earn their diploma. And so that's, that's- to earn their diploma. And so that's a real joy, but, you know, there are different variables to it that make it complicated, so.
No, thank you.
So, speaking of those challenges, while we're seeing a lot, and we've mentioned this a few times, a lot of the needs for the students, we're having more and more really complex needs. So students that have medical, social, emotional, learning, requiring multiple related services throughout their day, multiple staff to work with them. And those students we're seeing rising, and a lot of those children, and children that are moving into our districts. We plan as best we can for the needs of our kids as they move along through the grade levels, but as Cory mentioned, there can be a student that moves in tomorrow that will have a significant level of need. So finding ways to support those students, because once they're here, they're ours. So we want to make sure we have that in place for them. Another thing that's been, I would say, a real challenge, I think, across the levels this year, has been the number of evaluations that we're completing. Evaluations take a significant amount of time from our staff. It's an important, valuable tool that we have to have. Those evaluations can, requests can come from many different places. They can come from within our own staff and our system. They can come from parents. They can come as suggestions to parents, from other providers. And again, each evaluation can take many hours to complete between the, completing the testing with the student, evaluating those results, writing the report, having the meeting, and then eventually writing the IEP if a child qualifies, which adds to our special educators' responsibilities, our related service providers' responsibilities, because they are also service providers. They are not just evaluators. So we have to find the balance of meeting the minutes that children have within their IEPs, but also meeting these needs. So sometimes where those, what has to give can be more of those general education supports, meaning that time that a speech therapist is going into a kindergarten classroom and doing a general education support, that might have to be what has to go to the side. So the balance of providing those supports so we don't get to the point to need to do evaluation. So it's a dance. And some of the ways that we're, you know, looking at supporting people through that is, again, looking within district. We have really amazing people within our district that work collaboratively, and I think that is the best way that we find solutions, thinking outside the box. How do we make this work for all the kids and all the people? And also looking outside the district when we need to. We have some really good professional developments that we've brought in, people that come in to consult with us, that really have helped shape some of our programming and how we help with the testing.
Yeah. And to add to that, some of the innovation, when you talk about outside-the-box kind of thinking and program, you know, if you remember several years ago, led by our related service team, is around shifting to a 3-1 model, three weeks of direct services, one week of indirect consultation support for students in various settings. That has gone tremendously well. Families seem to be really, really supportive of that model. But also, to Ms. Ferraro's point, we utilize our in-district experts as much as we can, right? So we certainly can have challenges at our elementary level. I might ask some of our experts at the middle school to kind of help out at the elementary level. Just like at the high school, I might take someone from the high school who has a very specific skill set in this area, I might bring them to the elementary or the middle school. I think what's really important is knowing your people, knowing your people within your department, knowing their skills that's what they're able to do. I'm fortunate enough to know a lot of our people in the department, along with our coordinators and team chairs. It's really useful when you're able to leverage the expertise and the skill set of all of our staff, rather than contracting out for a service and bringing somebody else in for that. We have dedicated people that provide support to our district, as Mrs. Struble mentioned earlier, with Dr. Lisa Decker, but she's not a one-and-done. She's not like a workshop. She's coming in, she's going to provide some really constructive feedback for us in a really positive way, but also at the same time, we're able to kind of leverage our in-district experts. And that's kind of what we have, right? And Foxborough sets itself apart. People ask me all the time, "What's so great about Foxborough?" It's because of the people. It's because of the special ed department and who we have. And that certainly really has nothing to do with myself, or the team chairs, or the coordinators. Of course, we guide and facilitate that process, but we're not the boots-on-the-ground doing the work every single day for our kids. They are. And so that's, we support them. We provide a guide and some lanes to stay in, but also, as a director, I give them the flexibility to be able to support students as they feel they should be.
So this is my favorite slide. We continue to add and strengthen our Unified Athletics and activities. I'm going to speak to middle school, and Matt's going to speak to high school. Unified sports, it breaks down barriers. It builds relationships. It supports inclusion. It's, there's just so many wonderful, wonderful things about it. And I do have to give a shout out to Ms. Frazier, our principal, who I feel took this initiative and kind of ran with it. And now we have just, you know, taken the stick from her, and as coaches, which I coached the basketball team. I have the joy of coaching the basketball team. We've had that team for three years. I've coached the three years with Julia Schibler, but we started, I think, with 30-some kids. This year, we had 51 students that came out for the team and have kind of, you know, stuck with it and been a part of it. We also have Unified Bachi, and Cory had mentioned earlier, we have the new Unified Phys Ed daily, which is really, really incredible to go and either participate or watch those kids. So it's really, really nice to see these things, and to see it within sort of the culture of the building, shifting in a very positive way. And we had a pep rally for this basketball team, and it was, you know, of course, I love the athletes, one of the coaches, but it was really the school that made that pep rally. I mean, the kids were just so supportive and excited, and, you know, really screaming and yelling and doing the wave, and it just, you know, really means a lot to the athletes, who some of these athletes have never been on a team ever, or played basketball in their lives. So it's really, really fun to be a part of and exciting for it to kind of grow within the district.
Yeah, I'd definitely echo Kim in that this is my favorite slide. But basically, you know, we try to build our relationships through best buddies and through a warrior teammate throughout the day. And then we also offer Bachi basketball and track, my absolute favorite day of the year. This year, we have May 27th, our Unified Field Day, and we partner with Norton Schools, so I definitely invite any of you to come to that, because it's a really, really special day. Colleen Foley is at the helm of that. Her partner in crime was Teresa Petty, who took a job in another district, so those are some big shoes to fill there. But we've gotten some great support from Dr. Donovan, the rest of the admin team, Kelly Arcasha, she's in the art department, CJ Neely, he's the head of the physical education for the district. And then we've actually utilized one of our athletes who was in our PAVE program, who's designing the logo for the T-shirts and all the signage, and he's doing that through the graphic design with Kelly Arcasha. And it's just a phenomenal day, so.
So the last two slides are just really positive slides in terms of ongoing work across the district for all students, not just special education students, but for all students with mental health and social, emotional well-being. So at our middle school mental health team, we start every meeting with a shout-out, which is kind of a peer-to-peer kind of acknowledgement of a good deed or something special that has happened since our last meeting the week before. So I'm going to give a shout-out to Amy Muldowney, our wellness coordinator, as well as each and every one of our mental health staff across the district. We've talked about teachers, but I want to really acknowledge the really hard work that they do every day. And it's really nice to be a part of that. So we continue with our efforts with Panorama as our mental health screener. It's administered to three times a year, and mental health teams look at that data, and look at themes, and look at interventions, and ways to kind of strengthen how we support kids as it relates to their And just continuing with the mental wellness, we have historically had a strong relationship and collaboration with the Department of Mental Health, but we have this year kind of approached it again to kind of strengthen it across the district, especially considering the high number of kids. I spoke earlier around the really young kids, but we have a lot of students across the district at all levels and all ages that are struggling with the social, emotional. And so we have had DMH come to our mental health teams at each of our three levels and kind of share what they do, and figure out better ways to collaborate so that we can support families and students with high level of needs related to mental health. The elementary curriculum update, we are at the elementary level, the mental health team, it hasn't happened, but they are in the process of updating their Safe Touch and anti-bullying lessons, coming together sort of as a full team, and really looking at it, looking at ways they can improve it and make it stronger and better. And so that's not completed, but in process. This has been discussed, the district-wide therapeutic programs, again, you know, considering the level of needs of students, we're constantly at all levels, looking at not only our therapeutic programs, but our step-in, step-out, trying to adjust, adapt, whatever we need to do to meet the needs of kids who we currently have, to students who may be moving in, or, you know, students who are entering into crisis or needing a higher level of care. So we're constantly looking at and trying to work together across the whole district around how to strengthen our programs to support and meet the needs of our students. So the homeless support team, that's new this year, is the homeless liaison we have as a district, and I've seen an increase in our number of students who are homeless. And so to try to be as thorough as possible in supporting those families and those students, I have had members of our mental health team across all three levels be a part of what we're calling our homeless support team, to make sure that we're communicating. We meet on a monthly basis to really see how these students are doing, what do they need to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. And it's more of a collaborative effort, more than just for me as the liaison. It's Lisa McKim, I'll give her a shout-out. She's one of our newer social workers at the middle school. I sort of approached her, and she's taken a leadership role with this in supporting me as the homeless liaison, and that's been really helpful. And we've had a lot of really fruitful discussions around our homeless students across the district. And lastly, we continue our partnership with Gosnell Behavioral Health at the middle and the high school as it relates to having clinicians, school-based clinicians, for those families that have the inability to have transportation, or there's, you know, scheduling conflicts and they're not able to get their student to counseling. We're able to have that onsite and provide that, again, for those students who need the counseling but cannot get it externally. So it's school-based counseling, but it's not our staff. It's a clinician from Gosnell that we work with.
And just a piece on the district-wide therapeutic programs. And what I've said, and what I'll continue to say as long as I'm here, is that our programs will shift and change every single year based upon the students that they currently have in front of them. And so our elementary program has functioned in a certain way for a number of years to support and best support the students that they currently had. We're seeing a different profile of student that isn't necessarily just solely a therapeutic kind of need. And so we're looking to shift, and we're in the beginning stages with Mr. Stanton, to look at how do we expand that program, as well at the high school, as we're seeing students who require just substantial mental health support throughout their days, and looking at our two-teacher model at the high school, and what we need to do to best support the students that are transitioning up to the high school, but also students that are currently in the high school. And so, again, this, programs will never stay the same in the district as long as I'm here, and we have different students. And so those will continue to change. But it might sound redundant over time, year to year, but it's not, because we have different kids and a different set of staff sometimes, and so...
And I mean, I will just say to that, I know it's been said once, but we have amazing principals across the district, and they have collaborated with us and been incredibly supportive and thoughtful in terms of these discussions and being a part of it and supporting it. That's been, you know, a really important piece to this. So I just wanted to make sure that, another shout-out to our five principals.
I missed it. My favorite quote, I missed it. It's okay. You guys have copies of the PowerPoint. Any questions?
Just read it for us.
Oh, I can't. It's not off the top of my head.
What do you mean?
Thank you. If a child can't learn the way we teach, maybe we should teach the way they learn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions? Comments?
I have a quick question about the move-ins. Has it been steady prior to this year, or like, is it just a sudden jump up this year?
So to Kim's point, we've notoriously, even when I came in here, I remember the transitional time with Dr. Einzel. She had mentioned, one of the biggest challenges she had as director is understanding how we're getting so many move-ins every single year, and that's always been a challenge. In fact, and I kept it up, posted in my office, which is the move-in law, which is, you know, ironic, that was something that she needed to go back to every single time. But also, I would say, this year, it's an uptick as far as numbers, but also costs that are associated with those move-ins. We've traditionally have gotten collaborative move-ins, where students are attending, maybe not as an expensive kind of private day school, but the students that we're getting in now are students that are in residential care, or students with one-to-one supports. So that's kind of the change that we're seeing now.
Yeah, but then the numbers have, I mean, I feel that over time, we've looked at this data. I mean, Amy's been a part of that for years in terms of sort of what that looks like in the percentage of the out-of-district numbers, that our move-ins are pretty significant, you know, 30%, 40%. I mean, each year's a little bit different, but to Cory's point, we have, it's the actual fiscal piece of it this year, but the numbers have been pretty consistent. Historically, we've had a large number of out-of-district students who are move-ins.
Is it staying steady, or is it increasing?
It's increased this year, certainly. And again, the cost, which is why we kind of went with this special education stabilization. We've been able to, in the past, certainly sometimes absorb those students into our budget. Sometimes when they move in halfway through the year, we're only funding in through June 30th, and we can plan for the budget for the following year. But it just, like I said, the costs that are associated with the students that are moving in are somewhat different than what we've seen.
Okay, thank you. So keeping Karen on her toes, then.
Yes.
That's why I'm here.
And Amy, and Stephanie, of course.
Do we have questions? Comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. I know it's been stated, and it's kind of redundant, but you just, you really, you can't underscore enough, the programs that have been built in district, to be able, when you have that number of students that move in, that you're able to accommodate their needs with the programs that have been built, the shifting and changing based on the needs, and the school committee support, being able to fund those positions when we look at the cost for out-of-district versus having specialized teachers in the district. So it really is critically important for that piece, and the work that's been done to be able to meet the needs. Kim, the work that she's done to be able to really bring kids back, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work with families to build that trust, that we're able to provide those programs, and that our teachers are going to be able to take care of their kids in the way that they need to be taken care of and to meet their needs. So I know it's said, there's a lot that's been said, but to really, really boil it down, it comes back to the programs, the services, our staff, and really the diligent efforts to be able to meet the needs of the kids. And it is an exorbitant amount of work to be able to do that. So just really kudos to all of you and our educators across the board.
Thank you.
It really is quite impressive.
Truly, it is impressive.
It's not often, and these guys can attest to it, that I'm speechless, but I am. So this is my favorite reading from the weekend. I appreciate the color that you added to it. And I thought I was speechless until Amy used the word "trust." It is very clear, and I appreciate all the data, it is very clear that the trust is the foundation for all of the work that you do. And our children and their families are so lucky to have you guys building that trust first, and then figuring out what is right for the student and their family. So thank you.
Can I add to that? Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
The thing I was going to add about the trust, and I just want to say thank you. Since I've been doing, between AdCom and this, it's been about nine years, and so I've gotten to hear a lot of different reports. And the trust, the evident, the trust that you have in administration, and they and you, is so appreciated, because what I hear from your reports, year after year, is if you all need something, or there's a trend, and I like, you had a whole slide and a half devoted to challenges, like you're just facing it, because that's what I want this district to be, is a place where the professionals can project forward, start advocating for needs. If we can't fix it now, I mean, let's mandate by law we have to, but certain, these programs that you've built didn't happen overnight. It was a product of years of work and looking down the road. And I just can't stress what a refreshing and wonderful environment to see that flourish here. And then I just encourage you and all of your staff to just keep paying that forward in the same way that you trust students to have their vision. We want you to have your vision statement for your own wing of the store, and, you know, make sure that we all hear you loud and clear, so that we can try to fight for the resources that you all need to do your jobs.
Brent, do I get the wish list question?
Yes. That's how I used to phrase it, but see, here's the thing that I like about that, is I don't sense that you and your staff are shy in asking.
No, that's for sure.
Which is fantastic.
Dr. Burris would attest to that.
No, which is fantastic, though. That's what we want. Like, what do we need to get? Like, this is where you go, the resources that you need.
Yeah, and I think the decisions that you make, that we make in this district, sometimes there's a risk to that, right? Like, we're going to create a program, and to Dr. Burris' point, Kim's point earlier, when the students leave us to go out of district, it's not usually on a good note, usually, right? It's, students struggle, there were some challenges, there was a loss of trust between the families and the guardians and the district, and so... and the guardians in the district, and so, be able to recoup that over time, to be able to say, we actually do now have programs and supports and being able to kind of build that. That's where that magic happens. And so, you have to have all cylinders running when it comes to special education. I've said that before. But your inclusion model running at the same time as you have specialized programs changing as you're out-of-district and supporting those students in regards to bringing them back in district, allocating your resources as best as possible, it's no secret, it was shared tonight, where special education is about, you know, it's 25% of our budget, 26% of our budget. It's a lot of money that's involved, right? And it shows the dedication and support that you guys have provided over years since I've been here and long before my time. It speaks volumes about your character and what you support and what you believe in as far as supporting all of our students, although it comes with a cost, right? It does, that's a reality, but we have to do what we need to do for our kids, and we've been able to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming and speaking. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the first reading of, what is it, eight policies?
Yeah.
You guys have been busy. All right, we really do appreciate you guys, so we are going to turn it off to the policy subcommittee.
All right. For those still awake or have looked this far into the meeting, Mr. Irman and I have kind of attacked the policy manual section by section. Section J about students is rightly the biggest section of the whole manual, in anybody's manual, and it should be. The, you're going to see a theme in the policies that we present tonight, there wasn't need for major changes, but one of the things that's been, we're finding, has been kind of out-of-date, needing, brushing up in our policy manual, is that if we're backing it up with a law, a statute, we want to say that. And so, the collection of eight policies we have tonight, there's, we'll talk about it when it deviates from this, but most of them, we're simply updating legal references because it's the responsible thing to do, and given our own policy, BGB, in the policy manual, when we present even that change, we're supposed to do a first reading, so forgive me for these eight policies. And for the committee to look ahead, we've got nine policies on deck for the next meeting, and when we've tested the patience of the chair and the committee members enough with that, the next thing is we'll have for you all is kind of a, like, a to-do list. We will get through the entire manual with admin and departments' help, but by the one meeting from now, we'll have gone through the entire thing. We may not get everything presented here, but Mr. Irman and I's intent was to lay the path pretty clear. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Irman? Okay. All right. So, with that, sorry, Madam Chair, I'll get to it. All right. JICA, Student Dress Code. This is where we updated legal references, all right? The policy substantively remains unchanged. The responsibility for dress and appearance of the students will rest with the individual students and parents. They have the right to determine how the student will dress, providing that the attire is not destructive to school property, complies with requirements for health and safety, and does not cause disorder or disruption. The administration is authorized to take action in instances where individual dress code does not meet the stated requirements. This does not mean that the student, faculty, or parent groups may not recommend appropriate dress for school or special occasions. It means that students will not be prevented from attending school or school function, or otherwise be discriminated against so long as their dress and appearance meet the requirements set forth above. Legal references, Acts of 2022, Chapter 117, MGL 7183, Source MAS C, Updated 2022. Policy was last up, or policy was adopted on March 24th of '08. That's all I got.
Just one request.
Please.
First paragraph, can we add the word "guardians" as we've been doing?
Oh, thanks, Rob. Good catch. Where are we at? First sentence?
Last paragraph, right?
First sentence, very first sentence of the policy.
Students and parents at the end of the sentence.
Oh, duh. How'd we miss that? We might have been tired.
We go through a lot of policies.
Thanks. Any questions or discussion from the committee? Because when we do this, right, it's like the full, the whole policy is like out on the operating table. Okay.
All right. Seeing none? Are you okay moving on?
Yes, Chair.
All right. The next policy we have is File JJ A, Student Organizations. We simply added a cross-reference to policies. Student Organizations. Student organizations in the Foxborough Public Schools shall be encouraged when they meet the criteria of contributing to student self-esteem and performance, and should operate within the framework of state statutes, Foxborough School Committee policies, and administrative procedures. Each building principal shall develop general guidelines for the establishment and operation of student organizations within the particular school. Among other provisions, such guidelines shall require the approval of the principal prior to the formation of any club or organization in the school, and the assignment of at least one faculty or designated adult advisor or designee to each approved student organization. Within such guidelines will be provisions for a periodic review of all student organizations. The formation of any student organization that may engage in activities of a controversial nature shall require approval by the board. All student organizations shall be required to open membership to all interested and/or eligible students. Disruptive groups, secret sororities, and/or gangs shall not receive recognition in any manner under this policy. See also Policy JICF. All forms of hazing and initiation shall be prohibited in a student organization. No initiation shall be held for a student organization, which will bring criticism to the school system or be degrading to the student. The faculty or designated adult advisor or designee must attend every meeting of the student organization, whether conducted on school premises or at another location. Student Organizations High Schools. In addition to the above requirements, all clubs or organizations at the high school level will relate to the subject matter covered by the curriculum. The principal is responsible for determining that the purpose of a student organization is related to the curriculum. The principal is authorized to deny requests by unauthorized student organizations desiring to meet or form in a particular school. The principal shall inform the group of the reasons for the denial. The students and/or group may submit a written request to the superintendent or designee for review of the principal's decision. Legal Reference 603 CMR 26.06, Cross-Reference JICF, JICFA, and the policy was adopted 3/24/08.
Any questions or comments on this policy?
I'm going to check, Mark, off that one.
No, it's fine.
Let's move on to the next one.
All right. We didn't really want to change this one, but we had to. It's a bit long. Late-night and overnight, oh, sorry. File JJH-R, Late-night and Overnight Student Travel. Transportation. A. Use of vans or private automobiles for trips planned to include late-night or overnight student travel is prohibited. Late-night or overnight trips must use commercial motor coaches. Trips planned to include late-night or overnight student travel will include a pre-trip check of companies, drivers, and vehicles. Cory checks, sorry, Cory checks will be conducted in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38R. The superintendent or designee will ensure that the selected carrier is licensed for passenger transportation by the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, FMCSA. The Foxborough School District will not contract with any carrier that has a safety rating of conditional or unsatisfactory. D. The contract carrier will prohibit the use of subcontractors unless sufficient notices given to the Foxborough Public Schools that allows verification of the subcontractor's qualifications. Trip Scheduling. A. Overnight accommodations should be made in advance with student safety and security in mind. Whenever possible, trip schedules should avoid planning student travel between the hours of midnight and 6:00 AM due to the increased risk of vehicular accidents during this time period. B. Whenever possible, overnight trips should be scheduled on weekends or during school vacations to minimize loss of classroom time. Lost classroom time, my apologies. Non-academic field trips are considered optional school programs and do not count towards meeting structured learning time requirements. C. Trip itinerary's must leave enough time for drivers to rest in conformity with federal hour of service requirements and common sense. D. Trip scheduling should take into account the likelihood of delays due to weather, traffic, stragglers, and other unanticipated factors. E. If sustained, sorry, if substantially all members of a class are participating in a trip, the school should provide appropriate substitute activities for any students not participating. Fundraising. A. The amount of time devoted to fundraising should be reasonable and commensurate with the students' obligations for homework, after-school activities, and jobs. Group fundraising activities are preferred when practical. If students are charged individual fees for participation, every effort should be made to provide scholarship where needed. Source MAS C, Reviewed 2021. Cross-references are IJOA, Field Trips, ADDA, Cory Requirements. Legal refs, references, MGL 691B, 7137N, 7138R, 603 CMR 2700. Policy was adopted December 22nd, 2004. Policy was amended January 10th, 2005. Policy adopted as reviewed was March 24th, 2008. I didn't, we should fix the B, shouldn't be crossed out in the last section under group fundraising. That is the one section we changed. We removed the section that said, "Students should not be assigned individual fundraising targets because many of our overnight trips are student-funded." The ones that we engage in, like Scotland, and things like that. So, we thought it was safe to take that out.
Does the committee have questions or comments on this, things to fix?
I actually did, thank you for the explanation on that. Is there a different way to say that? Because we do, in many cases, I assume, want to discourage setting individual targets, so a fundraising...
Should be equitable?
I think it depends on the purpose of the funds, but this is specifically, I'm sorry, I'm just talking through this.
It's fine.
This is specifically for overnight trips. Okay, then I'm okay with it. I answered my question. Thank you, guys.
No, honestly, to your point, Mr. Canfield, we actually went around and around on that because we struggled with the same idea. But we have another read if people want to, you know what I mean, reflect on this, and if other policy language comes to mind, it'll come up next meeting. We're free to wave the second reading. The next policy is File JP, Student Gifts and Solicitations. Because of the embarrassment that might result among students, students will be discouraged from giving gifts to classroom teachers and other school personnel. For the same reason, there will be no formal exchange of gifts between students in the classroom. Solicitation of funds for charitable purposes from students of the school system will be made only as approved by the Foxborough School Committee. Any organization desiring to distribute flyers or other materials to students in connection with fund drives may do so only with the approval of the superintendent or their designee. Source MAS C, Cross-Reference GVEBC, Staff Gifts and Solicitations, JJ-E, Student Fundraising Activities, KHA, Public Solicitations in the Schools, and KHB, Advertising in the Schools. The policy was adopted 12/108. The only thing we added was "or their designee" because we know Dr. Burdus could get busy, and we want to make sure that if needed, someone else can just approve, as in our other policies.
I think to that point, if I've just had so many times, they're the repeat flyers that we have, so in order to get things back really quickly, Jamie kind of knows what the criteria is, and so, as a designee, she's been able to approve them, because it's not something that's out of what we've typically done.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
Questions? Additions?
Yeah, I hate the first sentence. I, there are many reasons why we should be discouraging gifts and solicitations, not just out of embarrassment.
Right.
I know that that's the template policy, but I also did some research, and there are other districts that have adopted different language that I, to me, sounds more appropriate. I mean, there's a reason why we don't do gifts, right?
Right.
In particular, Newton's policy, their first sentence reads, "Students will be discouraged from giving gifts of commercial value," which is the key piece of this, "to classroom teachers and other school personnel. Gifts of sentimental value are permitted. No student will be required to participate in any exchange of gifts in the classroom." And I just think that's an interesting distinction, the commercial value versus sentimental value, and it takes any reference to embarrassment, which is one reason why we should be discouraged, but not the only reason.
Noted.
And I would just wonder if the committee would consider language more similar to what Newton has versus to what the MAS C template has.
I'm more than fine with it, yeah, because we understand we were fixing one thing, but you're right, that is from the template language, and it is suboptimal.
Yeah. We have a meeting coming up on Thursday, so I'm sure the subcommittee can take another look at it, another crack at it, and see what we can bring up for the next school committee meeting in April.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Canfield.
I'm happy to give, this is my own copy of the Newton. If you'd like that, you're welcome to have it. I appreciate your consideration.
Oh, that's fantastic. And that goes for everybody, right? If you see something that should be better, should fix it. Moving on to File JQ, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. The only change we made in this, I'll note, was we took out something punitive, as we did with the dining fees in the previous, the most recent school committee meeting. All right, here we go. File JQ, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. The Foxborough School Committee recognizes the need for student fees to fund certain school activities. It also recognizes that some students may not be able to pay these fees. No student will be denied access into any program because of an inability to pay these supplementary charges. A school may exact a fee or charge upon, only upon, school committee approval. The schools, however, may charge students enrolled in certain courses for the cost of materials used in projects that will become the property of that student, or charge for lost and damaged books, materials, supplies, and equipment. Students who are indigent in, are exempt from paying fees. However, indigent students are not exempt from charges for lost or damaged books, locks, materials, supplies, and equipment. All student fees and charges, both optional and required, will be listed and described annual, annually, in each school's student handbook, or in some other written form, and distributed to each student. The notice will advise students that fees are paid and, of the penalties for their failure to pay them. Permissible penalties include the denial of participation in extraclass activities while students are enrolled in the district. Any fee or are charged due to any school in Foxborough Public Schools that is not paid by the end of, at the end of the school year will be carried forward to the next succeeding school year, as such debts are considered to be debts of the student to the Foxborough Public Schools and not a particular school. Source MAS C, 2021. Policy adopted September 8th, 2008. The thing we removed was the, a clause that noted that students' report cards would be withheld if they didn't pay their fees. Don't really do that anymore.
Any additions, fixes from the committee, massaging of language?
Just a question.
Always.
Does it add clarification to the first paragraph? Because we say, "No student will be denied, excuse me, access into any program because of inability to pay supplementary charges," but as it says in a later paragraph...
Right.
We do still expect children, every, a student is still responsible to pay any fees or fines associated, or charges or fines, which is, when we say it someplace, should we reiterate it in that paragraph? Because when I read that first paragraph alone, it is if I don't have a, if the student does not have an ability to pay, then... then there are no charges or fines. But we would still, but the way I read this subsequently is that we do expect the student to pay charges or fines, regardless of ability to pay. Unless I'm misreading the policy.
If the student is in this reading, the third, what we're going to call paragraph after the bullets, is the meaning of indigent to mean inability to pay? Question, not a statement.
Right, right. My personal interpretation is that indigent is one reason why a student may not have an ability to pay a charge or a fine, but it is not necessarily the only reason why a student may not have been, excuse me, may not be able to pay the fees. But that's my interpretation of that word. Which is why I went back to saying, should we add that sentence? Or we add a clause to the beginning?
What are the other reasons? I'm honestly, I'm searching.
I think temporary hardship is different than indigent. Sorry, it's what I struggle with, like pedagogy. That's probably the biggest one. I mean, as we've said, there, you know, we know that there are families that are hopefully experiencing, experiencing only temporary hardship. Indigent to me means, just again, my interpretation, is a more sustained.
Would it suffice to meet that potential disconnect that you're pointing out, Mr. Canfield, to expand that to, I guess, a more inclusive term? Or does that meet the same need? Because I think what I'm hearing you cite and tell me if I'm misinterpreting is that as presented, it seems to be a disconnect in the policy. And it stems from that first paragraph and then the limited use of that one word in the third paragraph. Is that the crux of it?
Yes.
Cool. My initial thing, and then Nathan, whatever you want with this too, is I think we can pull some other districts and see how they handled this. Because I think our focus was simply striking that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we struck the report card. We never had that, we never had a specific reference to our expectation that regardless of situation, we do expect the children, the student to pay charges and fines. And maybe that is not the expectation. So I guess if that is not our expectation, then we should
Change that. Yeah, make it conform with reality.
Right.
Fair enough.
No, that's good. I think we can look at it again.
Yeah, absolutely. Cool.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate it, it's very helpful.
I'm just wondering too, on that, thinking of some different examples where we experience is with like laptop damage. So those are, like, that's what's swirling in my mind right now and thinking about, sometimes it's not a matter of inability to pay. It's a matter of us just trying to collect it.
Right.
And we can't get it. And so it's problematic because of the damage. And we see a lot of damage, particularly at the middle school where students start to take them home in seventh and eighth grade. We, it's reduced dramatically because fifth and sixth grade, they don't take them home anymore. I'm just thinking about some of those fees and some of the damage and everything. So those are some examples I'm thinking of.
I appreciate that. And I think the, I think it's key in this not to hamstring the district, you know, in a common sense approach to this while not, you know, punishing students who already have a demonstrated inability to pay, right? And I think that's the other thing we should look at. I mean, I'll, me and Mr. Remer will look at too is just making sure we've kind of successfully kept those two distinct. The idea of damage. Right, because is it the case, is it, I mean, I'm sorry, and there's no building administrators here too, but if a kid damages a Chromebook, could pay. They're not, can't get the Chromebook, can't get the Chromebook. There's going to be some consequences, I would imagine.
Right, so the, the hard part of that is, because you'll see things, I mean, there's accidental damage that happens and then families that get the insurance and all that. So, but there's also damage that's not accidental. And trying to get that, you know, fee back or we're also, we're passing out loaners because we don't want to deny access.
Right.
You know, the curriculum at the same time. But trying to get those, you know, fees can be challenging.
Understood. Okay.
So just something, as you're relooking through that, through that lens, kind of there's an example maybe to
Yes, it is.
ponder.
Appreciate it.
Hey, man, this is good.
Next policy we have is file ACE, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Disability. This is a direct result of the food service audit we had. Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1992 requires that no qualified individual with a disability shall, because the Foxborough School District's facilities are inaccessible to or unusable by individuals with disabilities, be excluded from participation in or be denied the benefits of the services, programs, and activities of the Foxborough Public Schools or be subject to discrimination. Nor shall the Foxborough Public Schools exclude or otherwise deny services, programs, or activities to an individual because of the known disability of a person with whom the individual is known to have a relationship or association. Definition. A qualified individual with a disability is an individual with a disability who, with or without reasonable modification to rules, policies, or practices, the removal of architectural, communication, or transportation barriers, or the provision of auxiliary aids and services meets the essential eligibility requirement for the receipt of services or the participation in programs or activities provided by the Foxborough Public Schools. Reasonable modification. The Foxborough Public Schools shall make reasonable modifications in policies, practices, or procedures when the modifications are necessary to avoid discrimination on the basis of disability, unless the Foxborough Public Schools can demonstrate that making the modifications would fundamentally, fundamentally alter the nature of the service, program, or activity. Reasonable meal modifications to accommodate individuals with disabilities will be made. Substitutes to the regular meal must be made at no extra cost for children who are unable to eat meals served in the child nutrition program because of their disabilities. Communications. The Foxborough Public Schools shall take the appropriate steps to ensure that communications with applicants, participants, and members of the public with disabilities are as effective as communication with others. To this end, the Foxborough Public Schools shall furnish appropriate auxiliary aids and services where necessary to afford an individual with a disability an equal opportunity to participate in and enjoy benefits of a service, program, or activity conducted by the Foxborough Public Schools. In determining what type of auxiliary aid or service is necessary, the Foxborough Public Schools shall give primary consideration to the requests of the individuals with disabilities. Auxiliary aids and services. Auxiliary aids and services includes, one, qualified interpreters, note takers, transcription services, written materials, assisted listening systems, and other effective methods for making orally delivered materials available to individuals with hearing impairments. Two, qualified readers, taped texts, audio recordings, Braille materials, large print materials, or other effective methods for making visually delivered materials available to individuals with visual impairments. Three, acquisition or modification of equipment or devices. And four, other similar services and actions. Limits of required modification. The Foxborough Public Schools is not required to take any action that it can demonstrate would result in a fundamental alteration in the nature of a service, program, or activity, or an undue financial and administrative burdens. Any decision that, in compliance with its responsibility to provide effective communication for individuals with disabilities, would fundamentally alter the service, program, or activity, or unduly burden the Foxborough Public Schools shall be made by the Foxborough School Committee after considering all resources available for use and funding in operating the program, service, or activity. A written statement of the reasons for reaching that conclusion shall accompany the decision. Notice. The Foxborough Public Schools shall make available to applicants, participants, beneficiaries, and other interested persons information regarding the provisions of Title II of the Americans, of the American with Disabilities Act, ADA, and its applicability to the services, programs, or activities of the Foxborough Public Schools. The information shall be made available in such a manner as the Foxborough School Committee and superintendent find necessary to apprise such persons of the protections against discrimination assured them by the ADA. Compliance Coordinator. The Foxborough Public Schools shall designate at least one employee to coordinate its efforts to comply with and carry out its responsibility under Title II of ADA, including any investigation of any complaint communicated to it alleging its noncompliance or alleging any actions that would be prohibited under ADA. The Foxborough Public Schools shall make available to all interested individuals the name, office address, and telephone number of the employee or employees so designated and shall adopt and publish procedures for the prompt and equitable resolution of complaints alleging any action that would be prohibited under the ADA. The school system receives federal financial assistance and must comply with the above requirements. Additionally, the Foxborough School Committee is of the general view that, one, discrimination against a qualified disabled person solely on the basis of disability is unfair, and two, to the extent possible, qualified disabled person should be in the mainstream of life in the school community. Accordingly, employees of the school system will comply with the above requirements of the law and policy statements of this Foxborough School Committee to ensure nondiscrimination on the basis of disability. Legal references. The Individuals with Disabilities Act, Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Section 504 as amended, Education for All Disabled Children Act of 1975, MGL 71B-1, Chapter 766 of the Acts of 1972, Title II, American with Disabilities Act of 1992, Board of Education, Chapter 766, Regulations Adopted 1074 as amended through, through 32878. Cross-reference IGB Support Services Programs. Policy adopted 32408. So that's as a direct result of the food service audit.
The pressure. This one got a check mark, so I don't have any comments.
No, no comments.
Okay. This is, this one will be fast. File ADDA-E-3. It's a core request form. It's supposed to be in our policy manual. Our, the one in the policy manual was not our current core form. And with all the ADDA-E-3, it's, when you have dashes like that in subletters, it usually means there's attachments. And we don't actually have to read through the core form, but it is the one that the district has been using for the last few years and the public and anyone who's coached or driven a child is familiar with. So it's just putting the right form in there. Mr. Remer, you want to read again?
Sure.
File IK, Academic Achievement. The philosophy of the Foxborough School Committee concerning academic achievement as well as children's social growth and development is based on the premise that children have diverse capabilities and individual patterns of growth and learning. Therefore, the committee feels it is important that teachers have as much and as accurate knowledge of each student as possible in order to assess his or her needs and grow, and growth, and make instructional plans for him or her. A sharing of the information among parent, teacher, and student is essential. The committee supports staff efforts to find better ways to measure and report student progress. It will require that, one, parents slash guardians be informed regularly and at least four times a year of the progress their children are making in school. Additionally, parents and students may regularly check academic progress online using Power School software to monitor academic achievement in real time. Parents slash guardians will be alerted and conferred with as soon as possible when a child's performance or attitude becomes unsatisfactory or shows marked or sudden deterioration. Three, insofar as possible distinctions will be made between a student's attitude and his academic performance. Four, striving for consistency in grading and reporting. Five, when no grades are given, but the student is evaluated informally in terms of his or her own progress, the school staff will also provide a realistic appraisal of the student's standing in relation to his or her peers. Six, when grades are given, the school staff will take particular care to explain the meaning of marks and symbols to parents. Reference Foxborough Public School Plan for Success. Policy adopted 32408. Policy revised 42511. The only change we had was change it from Foxborough Public School Strategic Plan to Foxborough Public Schools Plan for Success.
What I'm wondering, when it says that progress is going to be four times a year, like, we have trimesters at the elementary level, so that's three times a year.
Regularly?
And then even at kindergarten, they have report cards twice a year.
I know, that's
So you're kind of boxing yourself in when you're looking.
Does it make more sense to reference the academic reporting schedule? Because it varies at every level.
You could do it that way?
Yeah. As per the Thank you.
I'm just gonna, and we can actually let go of the guardian thing on this one because it's some of the, except for the second paragraph.
Yeah, I was wondering about that as we read it.
Yeah.
If we can add it.
It's, yeah, I just, for consistency.
If you're going to do it, please add it under number six as well.
And number one.
Yes.
The second sentence is number one.
It's the second reference in number one.
So going back to item number one.
Yep.
To, to Dr. Burdo's point, the, at least four times per year, sure, but in the, in the second sentence as well. The Power School software is not used across all grade levels on a consistent basis to monitor academic achievement in real time. For example, at the elementary level where we use standards-based report cards or teachers are, are keeping track of student academic progress in other platforms and only utilizing Power School for, for end of term, end of trimester, or end of semester. For example, report cards. So I, I worry about that language being in there only because I would not want to put our elementary teachers in a position where a parent or guardian is requesting that information and it, it's not updated in the same fashion in those grade levels.
Sorry, Dr. Burrows, I was jumping ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Would it make the statement accurate and worthwhile to say additionally, parents slash guardians and students, and no, and, and, at the second, and students at the secondary level? So encompassing a heard and
Or can they not, the way I heard Dr. Burrows was that you can, we're still doing it at the elementary level, we're just not using Power School. So it's the reference to Power School that's
Sure, so our, our elementary teachers are regularly communicating with families and tracking academic progress. And so our parents and guardians and students could check in with their child's teacher. That, so I wouldn't want to only refer to at the secondary level and then omit checking in on academic progress at the elementary level for that same reason.
Then I, might I add a suggest, if you think it meets the need? Keeping that sentence referencing secondary in there and then a follow-up sentence indicating that students at the primary level are encouraged to contact teachers, utilize regular communications home. Things of that nature.
I honestly would really want to have a conversation with principals on this as far as anything if you're going to have something on elementary because it is such a different animal, if you will. I think adding that at the secondary level because it's specific to an online tool with Power School. I mean, but the other part too, which could be problematic and we're not changing, but your student, that's a specific student information system.
That's gonna be my next question.
Correct.
Is that we just referenced?
So to call out Power School, you really just want to say a student information system, so.
If you change it.
So it might be that if you give us an opportunity, we can check with principals. We have an admin meeting tomorrow, actually, and we can add this and see about language there that meets the needs for both elementary and secondary.
Thank you.
Where your meeting Thursday and then we keep, you know, give you that feedback.
That would be great.
Okay.
I agree, yeah.
I think, and however the, because we really are speaking to the building leads on this for the different levels. on this for the different levels. And if it's the will of the group to greatly simplify that statement into an all-encompassing thing, fine. If they prefer to delineate it, fine, so long as it just makes sense when we read it. I appreciate that. Anything else?
Okay with everybody?
I think the remainder of it is fine.
Appreciate that, Dr. Burrows. Okay.
Okay, we are on to the next item, the second reading of policy IKF, the graduation requirements.
Okay, I'm going to discuss the change that happened, and then I would entertain a motion to either read or, I mean, I'll take the advice of the committee on doing a second read or foregoing it. Thanks to Dr. Burrows for backing this up through law and other checks. Really, the version we have here, it's similar to what we had. It's identical to what we had read before, but we had gone through a few rounds of questioning on, do we include stuff, do we not? And thanks to Dr. Burrows' research, the changes that are here actually do pass with the state. In particular, the one thing that people wanted to keep included as opposed to striking was the under social studies, one of which must be U.S. history. While it is in mass law, we lose nothing by mentioning it, and it's more common sense -- it makes more sense to anybody reading this policy, what the texture of the requirements are. And then if any of our student reps to the committee delve into the archives deep enough to listen to this part of the meeting, their suggestion to add in the elective requirements doesn't need to be in this policy, because really what we're talking about are the essential So would people in the committee like the second reading?
So I, yeah, just, I don't know, procedurally, the asterisk next to four credits, is that supposed to be a strike through?
It is, as opposed to an underline.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just -- and then I did not bring this up the first time, and I apologize for that. Do we need a credit for foreign study paragraph, which is common in many other districts for this same policy?
Meaning a student who's doing a semester or a section, like, you know, abroad?
Yes.
I didn't see it as necessary, although if our curriculum and instruction experts think that it helps the policy or gives students, families, and in particular our high school folks, more backing in handling that type of thing.
I'm sorry, I missed exactly what the question is.
Do we -- we don't have a statement around credit for foreign study.
Some places do.
Many other districts do. The template policy does as well. Do we feel like we need that paragraph? Or, I mean, this might have been -- this policy might have been adopted back in -- oh, we don't have the date on it.
Probably 2008.
Okay. That might have been introduced since 2008, and I guess the other reference is we need to have the policy adoption date on here. But I don't know if we need a -- I don't know if that is something that we think is a significant need for our district, or whether it was in, you know, whether we made a specific decision to not include that, I guess is really the question.
If there's mention of it, and this would be a question we can chase down, or if you happen to ask, if there's a provision in the handbook, particularly at the high school, that handles that, I'd -- it's -- then it's okay, because we considered it kind of a policy matter, like, I'm sorry, an internal policy matter that doesn't necessarily need to go into district policy, but I would defer to -- yeah, I guess I would defer to what you and?
I'm just trying to think, we don't have examples of where they're doing study abroad, where they're getting credit for it.
Sure, and what I would say, too, is to determine high school graduation eligibility, we would localize whatever that coursework was. So, for example, if a student were to go away fall semester of their senior year and came back, we'd ensure that the courses that they were enrolled in were consistent with courses here, and we'd localize that. So I'm not?
Which is exactly what the paragraph that I -- the paragraphs that I read states, right, which is the student should get the coursework approved in advance, it should be in line with the exist or the current district's curriculum, and that the whatever institution they attended abroad will provide transcript of their work. So it's, I understand we're saying that that would happen. My question is, do we need to codify that in this policy?
I don't think that we do, but we can certainly follow up on that.
You know, I'm okay with the casual practice, but that then becomes a casual practice, not a?
But they're unenrolling. They're unenrolling from our schools, they're enrolling in a different school, they're not still a Foxborough student in that case.
Because we don't have recognized study abroad.
Right.
Partnerships with other institutions the way some high schools do.
But does that make a difference?
It does.
Why?
Because for a student, to Dr. Burrows' point, for a student to say, "I'm going to Australia for next semester," which, great, they actually do have to, and this is part of whatever, they have to unenroll.
Right.
And that means they're no longer our student.
Correct.
And then when they come back, like, they're transferring back, we would review any credits that they had from there, as you would from any other transfer student from Walpole or wherever, and you have to see, do their credits actually match up? Like, this does happen when kids, because we do have a sizable number, will initially go to one of the VOTEXs and then decide, maybe after grade 10, to come back. We do the backwards thing of, meaning the schools, any school in mass, does the backwards thing of looking at the credits, matching it up to their grid.
Right, I get what you're saying, and I understand, like, even a student moving from, you know, Missouri to Massachusetts, so that may apply in that same situation. And this is not necessarily specifically because they're, in my mind, which is why I think I would like you to review it.
Sure.
It is not because they've necessarily are going through a Foxborough-sponsored program abroad, excuse me, abroad. But if they have attended, even if it's a student moving from another country, right, whether it's a semester or a year that they were in, you know, that curriculum, they're going to follow a different but similar curriculum, because the requirements there were different. Are we not giving them credit for that work, even if it is similar but different? That's really my question.
Yeah, it's case by case.
Okay, that's fine, but do we need to then say that, or do we just leave it as what we feel like, which could be, which is okay?
I think it's a part of our just regular practice. I don't know that you need to say it. It's what we've done, whether they're moving from another state to, or they're moving from another country, or if we think about some of our newcomers even, so getting their transcripts from other -- we're having to go back and look to see what are the equivalents. We've had translators to look at the transcript themselves, to equate it, to see what it is, and we go through that process.
Okay, all of which I get.
I just worry about the specificity of study abroad. For example, in prior districts, I can't think of an instance here, we may have a student in ski school for a number of months, and they're taking an academic program there and then coming back, and we're localizing their transcript in that case, too. So I worry that it's not just specific to study abroad, so I wouldn't want a narrowing language when our process is to treat that student as a transfer student, acknowledge what they took, try and match that up with existing coursework, and then move on so that they can continue to meet our high school graduation requirements.
Regardless of where they're coming from?
Right, right, regardless of where they're coming from. But I'm not opposed to looking further into it, I would just want that language to be general enough where it didn't only solve an issue for one specific type of kid.
Right, all of which I understand, and I understand that it's our practice, and I agree that it's the right practice. My question really is if, why do so, why does the template policy have that paragraph in there, and why do so many other districts, I don't have a percentage of the districts that I looked at, why do so many other districts, who I cannot imagine operate too differently than we do in this situation, specifically call that out? Because it's, and maybe they shouldn't, maybe they need to delete it because they haven't updated their policy, but is there something that we're not thinking about that they felt they needed to include in their policy? That's, I guess, probably the question I have, now that I get to it.
No, I appreciate it, and I think the AFAST way around this is we'll talk to some of the perhaps reluctant but definite friends that Mr. Irman and I have developed at the MASC when we call and ask about policies, because that's, it's totally a fair question. It's like, why is it, because it does seem?
Like, why wouldn't you do that?
But, yeah, I know, and like, and I appreciate your note of caution, Mr. Cantfield, is like, don't just be cavalier, but like, is there, is there something we're missing? Because the thing that both Mr. Irman and I are both very conscious of, as is, you know, is that we didn't decide to give these 284, now 286, policies over to a lawyer and say, fix it, which, you know, would have been expensive, but some places do that. And so anytime people want to inject a note of, like, let's just double-check why something's there, why something's not there, a reference, whatever, and we've done that, made a grand total, like, three times so far with town council or district council, and, but, so I, anyway, one way around saying thanks.
So this policy is going to go back?
Well, here's the question, does it make sense to?
We need this.
We need this.
That's my issue.
We're coming up on graduation.
Graduation. We gotta get in compliance with the state, so would it make sense to vote on this policy today and then look at Mr. Cantfield's suggestion and see if that paragraph or clause is worthy in this policy, in another policy, in its own policy, just to see what we think is best with that? But we do need a policy.
Friends, if we can wait, we have another meeting in, what, three weeks?
April 8th.
Okay, so we have another meeting in two weeks, right? If we can get an answer, then, or if we don't have an answer by then, I am more than happy to follow that plan, but if we can get an answer before then, I'd rather not have to remember to revisit this policy at a later date if we don't have to. Because I'm not sure we're going to have a board that, in the next decade, that is willing to do the work that the two of you have done in, with our current policy manual. So that's my concern.
Route one.
Question is that, Stephanie, how do you feel about that? Because I am okay with Nate's proposal as well, if this needs to go in, because I am aware that this does need to go in, and we did miss it last meeting.
We can also commit, to your point, we can also, it ends up in the same point that Mr. Cantfield's suggesting, we can also just commit to putting this on the next week's agenda regardless of the final.
I would feel more comfortable having a vote on this.
We can report back on research.
I do agree, and that's why I'm asking for Stephanie's input. We are kind of toeing the line here, and I, you know, it's kind of, I rather.
So Dr. Donovan and myself met with the guidance department, high school department heads, earlier this week, and began to review students from the class of 2025 that had not yet met the competency determination through passing the MCAS. So we've actually completed that review based on our internal process and the current recommended changes that haven't necessarily been voted on by the state at this point, but we've conducted the review to make sure that we are prepared when that vote comes around on May 20th. There's going to be such a tight turnaround time, we want to make sure that we'd at least done that process. So I would say that we feel comfortable with that, and provided that, this graduation requirement policy is voted on before that May 20th vote date, I'd say that we're still within the safe zone of when that policy gets adopted. I'm not opposed to your suggestion, I think that would be fine as well, but from my side of the House, there's nothing that's jamming us up, because we can't officially determine that competency determination and certify that until after the May 20th vote, regardless.
And I'm going to vote, based on what you've just said, that even if we determine based on advice that we receive, that we do need to have some type of paragraph about that, it doesn't substantially change what the graduation requirements are. So we would be okay approving, I would certainly be okay at that point approving the policy. I just, it concerns me that, like I said, I saw so many other policies that do have that paragraph, and, again, I don't know if it's a hang, a holdover from old, or if it's something that added since, was added since the last time we updated the policy.
Sometimes it's, right, sometimes it is, and sometimes there's a reason that we need somebody with more context to help us with.
So my only concern of waiting until the April 8th meeting is that is the last meeting on the books for this board with the people on the board, and if there are some other changes that we end up discussing then, or some new thoughts that come to light, I don't want to have to keep pushing it off onto a new board, and by no means voting on this today would shut the door to this discussion. I'm, full intention is to bring this back up on the April 8th school committee meeting, we'll talk about it at subcommittee meeting on Thursday, maybe we'll have an answer by then, we have plenty more before. So my intention would be to continue discussing this. However, I'd feel personally more comfortable with this policy in the books.
Honestly, guys, I'm comfortable either way.
I'm fine with that, too, as well, because it doesn't change the outcome.
And it won't on our end, either.
If.
And I do see your point.
If, then may I suggest to you, Madam Chair, that we put this at, before the other policies, before the first read on the next agenda, we just revisit this, come what may, like, meaning the research. So if we vote on it now, great, but either way, we're reporting back.
Either way, it's back on the agenda next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's agreed upon, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Wait for the reading first.
Oh, that's right.
What?
Waiving the reading. I am sorry, we got so far in the weeds. Thank you.
I move to waive the second reading of policy file IKF graduation requirements.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ruda made a motion, Mr. Irman seconded, all in favor of waiving the second reading. Approved for 00.
Any other motion, Madam Chair?
Well, I'm sorry?
You had another motion?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve policy IKF graduation requirements.
Second.
Okay, Thax made a motion, Mr. Irman seconded, all in favor.
Sure.
Okay, so this movement is, this policy is approved.
Madam Speaker.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and all against? All abstaining?
Very good.
Okay, so the motion passes, 301, thank you. Brent?
It's a village, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, we got far in the weeds with that one. Up next, we have community updates. Does anyone have any community updates?
I would just mention, are there more pictures, or is that the picture?
That is the picture. That is the picture, that is the picture of everyone at the State House. That was everyone who attended the meeting, except for Mr. Irman, who was standing on the other side with a camera.
Someone had to take the picture.
Standing on the other side with the camera.
Oh, that's cool.
Yes.
And I did want to mention, Ms. Wiley was unable to attend this evening, our MECO coordinator, but she had shared with me that she's more than happy to attend a future school committee meeting, maybe at a teaching and learning highlight, to talk more about the MECO program and in all of the work that our students have been doing that are connected with the MECO program, including our Community Cousins program as well.
Yes, she's working hard on that program. I cannot tell you how much I adore Chantel, the enthusiasm she has is just amazing, and all her students adore her, they absolutely do, and that just speaks to what a great leader she is.
She is, she's really wonderful, and in a short amount of time, she's built some wonderful relationships with her students at the middle school and at the high school.
Yes, yes. I just have a quick update. This is to follow up on a meeting from last month about the AED devices. It has been confirmed an AED will be placed at the booth, and it will be placed at the Payson. So that's just for everybody's information, and also for everyone's information, the park and rec minutes are now posted on the Foxborough government website under Department's Recreation, so if anybody's interested, they can find the meeting minutes there. All right, I think that about wraps up this meeting. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This motion is adjourned. Thank you.